Good morning. We are in the committee of the whole meeting of February 14th, and we are reading on traditional territory of the Squamish region. There's an agenda in front of you. There was an addition put on the agenda. It was on the agenda, it was approved, and then somehow it can get put on there. There's no report with it, but I guess technically this would be an amended agenda. There's a step code in there, step code update for council's information. So, motion to approve the amended agenda by Ted, second by Peter. All those in favor? All those motion carries? But before we get to that fun stuff in the afternoon, we have budgets.
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. What do you mean, "the fun stuff in the afternoon"? We're talking budgets!
The less fun stuff.
Alright. Thank you. Christine Matthews, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And without too much further ado, I'm going to pass you over to Tanya Bastian, who's been walking you through the budget and coordinating the budget process to date. I'm happy to say that we are, as of today, still on schedule. We're hoping to work through today and keep us on schedule and work towards getting to three readings of the financial plan bylaw. I'll just pass it over to Tanya.
I just wanted to start off with indicating to the public that we're always open to them weighing in, because we're always listening. So there is many options, different avenues. They are able to attend open meetings and comment in person. Email at budgetfeedback@squamish.ca or council@squamish.ca. There is Twitter @squamistown with hashtag #squamishbudget as well as the squamish.ca website. Schedule highlights: we're currently working towards the three readings February 28th. And then in April and May, we've got our property tax review and property tax bylaw. The agenda today: we want to address public feedback since the public meeting on January 31st and go over any further proposed amendments, whether that be from the public feedback. There will be some discussion in relation to public art and other adjustments. We have debt service and a few other items that we'll be going over briefly under consideration as well. Goals for today are to review public feedback, address any further amendments, and then obtain permission to proceed with the financial plan bylaw through the readings. So, with that being said, I'd like to hand it over to Christina Moore, our Communications Manager, to provide a verbal update on our public feedback.
Good morning, council. Christina Moore, Communications Manager. Just to provide a bit of a summary of the budget engagement we have undertaken to date and through the process. We've had all of our budget documents that council has been reviewing online since the budget workshops began in earnest in mid-December. They have been updated each time there has been an update to ensure that the public can follow along. We did create a budget video with Mayor Heinzman in the new year, highlighting some of the major projects featured in the 2017 budget. We had a fair number of views on that. We had about 1,600 video views through our Facebook page and another 71 views through YouTube. The average duration was a little shorter than the full length. An average duration on YouTube was about 2 minutes and 17 seconds, so a number of people got quite a bit out of it. Once the workshops had reached a point where council had reviewed everything, we took the key aspects of the budget and created the public information boards and posted them at the Brennan Park Recreation Centre, Senior Centre, Municipal Hall, and a smaller display at the library. We had a number of comments through those centres, and I think people, we've had generally good feedback that the budget information was made available through those channels. We posted them at a time where council had reached a relative sense of agreement in terms of what you had discussed here at these workshops and what had sort of made in or out at that particular point in time. We gathered comments through comment boxes, so people could leave anonymous comments. And we also had kind of a graffiti wall at the Brennan Park Recreation Centre where we had the space in order to capture more public comments as well. And of course, as you are aware, the Public Information Night was held here in council chambers on January 31st and streamed, as all the workshops are. So, the feedback has been, was included on Thursday's agenda. We received about 45 comments in total across the budget process. This year, you know, the comments ranged quite broadly. We didn't see a galvanizing issue this year similar to what we have seen in the past. You'll remember, in the past, we have received a lot of comments over topics like the Henderson Lights. You know, those groups definitely lobbied their members and got a lot of feedback to us. This year, we haven't seen any of those particular issues. So they really have been broadly focused. The seniors' van definitely received the most. I think we had about six or seven comments on that topic in and of itself. At Brennan Park, the themes really focused on Brennan Park amenities. We saw a number of comments about a second sheet of ice for the arena and updated equipment across the board at Brennan Park. We have seen some feedback in the chief newspaper and submitted to council with regards to sidewalk clearing and the snow that we have received in abundance last few weeks. The senior centre, we received three comment cards through the senior centre box, comment box. One focused on not taking money out of the paving program for trails. And this comment indicated that our roads are terrible these days and should be kept up like they used to be. And another comment at the senior centre focused on a request to paint the senior centre as it hasn't been painted since it was built. And again, you know, the comments are fairly broad-ranging. So you have been provided with a copy of all of them. And unless you want to go through any specific ones, I will leave it at that at this point in time.
Council, any questions about some of the feedback we've received? Council, if I may ask.
Yeah, you know, and it's funny, because I tell everyone, "Listen, if you're going to complain, go on the website and complain." Because everybody that I talk to complains about the tax increases. Everybody, bar none. And I just don't see that reflected in the comments we get all the time, you know? I mean, everyone's worried about their assessments going up so much, and, "Oh my god, the taxes and blah, blah, blah." Everybody I talk to says that. And then I say, "Well, on the website." And it just doesn't filter through. It's just a comment.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the commentary is about the B.C. assessments. People are really worried about that, you know? Which we don't necessarily control for good. They're really worried about that particular assessment.
So there's two comments here. The hand shower for the family showers. I'm wondering if we could put that on Camilla's list? It's actually really useful when you have toddlers who don't want to stand in the shower. There's only one in the family shower area. The other one's just a spray-down shower. So if that's not an expensive fix, it'd be great to have at least two handheld showers. So you can hook it up, but it also means that you don't have to spray your baby. We went through a lot of tears. Yeah, you know that too. So if that one, I feel, is something that is possible, we could maybe do. And then the other one, and I wondered if this was addressed in the digital strategy, was the comment about having better Wi-Fi for Brennan Park that's not Shaw. Do you remember if that was in the digital strategy? Because this parent, you know, was saying, "A lot of us spend a lot of time here. It'd be great to have good Wi-Fi, so we get people to work."
Hold on. With regard to Wi-Fi at Brennan Park, can we get a bit of a Conrad around? Can he speak to that? Or somebody carry it to him?
I can get it.
Yeah, that was, those were the two that sort of, I wondered if we could sort of address.
Thanks. I'm slightly worried about the business assessment. We don't, we talk about residential all the time, and we don't talk about the ratio. And if the ratio changes for business, it means it's going to, like, that ratio increases the taxes for, if you want, tax businesses, less or more. It depends on what the residential rate is. And so we act in isolation with business taxes and say that we'll get to it, but we haven't really discussed that at all. How does this point to, how are the business taxes are going to be affected by the amount that we decide as well?
So, hold it thought, I'll just get an answer to that. So usually, we just look at the revenue we need, and then we determine business and residential mill rates. We haven't had that conversation yet. So just Christine or Tanya, when is that coming?
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. We'll be looking at that in April, once the revised rule has come. Having said that, right now, our assumptions we're making is that we would maintain the ratio of business to residential. And it was, I think about 2.7 last year, ratio of 1 to 2.7. And so right now, we're looking at all areas, getting about the same application of increase in rate requirements.
So with that rate increase, that's going to hit the businesses a bit harder, because our assessments have gone up as well. And we don't tend to, this is all residential. We don't talk to the businesses about their needs. You know, we have business owners that comment on the budget, but we haven't said, "This is going to be the business tax," which may mean that we have to cut the budget more. So we have a final budget and a final need, but we haven't looked at it in conjunction with other areas of our town's tax increases. So to have a business rate, so that everybody is very clear, "Okay, your business rate is going up this much," we may need to cut the needs down and have that final budget come down and not have it be a final number. Because we set the residential rate, and then we set the business rate. So I find that a little bit difficult.
Yes, so unfortunately, we do end up actually specifying the tax rates once we have the revised rule. That is true. However, we can't specify them until the financial plan is done. Actually, that's the law. So one of the things that I just want to caution you about is when we talk about the effective tax rate that we've been banding around, so we need a 7, I think it was now 6.5% revenue need. But we actually, when we talk about that estimated impact on taxation increase right now, that is applying across all classes. So we're essentially picking the rate or the increase rate of all the rates to get that. So when we say it's about 4.5 right now, we're actually talking about residential class, business class, every class. It is true that the tax rate is higher for business than residential. That is absolutely true. We were looking at stabilizing that and keeping it the same from year to year. So again, that's, they're already dealing with that. And now how are they going to increase is what we're determining. And again, unfortunately, it is the cart before the horse type thing. We have to, you know, to plan this out.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what I was pointing out.
But that is legislative. But you have another question there. Didn't articulate, but I think intended there. Is about engagement with businesses and how do we engage on the budget with the business community? And so I'm just wondering, maybe just put that in your thinking cap for now, but we do tend to go up to places where residences are, but we haven't had that conversation necessarily on engagement from you with the business community.
Yeah, a fair bit of our engagement is through our online channels. So we don't differentiate between reaching a residence or a business. I think the audience is fairly blended. We don't have analytics as to how that would break down. But the general premise is that we are trying to reach all citizens through the engagement. You know, looking ahead to next year, I think the boards were great. And the video this year, we took a different track. Last year, we needed to wait, sorry, for the 2016 budget, we needed to wait until council had reached a certain point, because we actually went, we included some of the hard numbers in the video. This year was a little bit different. With Mayor Heinzman's input and vision, we focused more on major projects. And next year, I think we could do that quite a bit earlier from what we did this year. So we can look at different ways. We're always trying to get more people involved. You know, I think the challenge is always how to come up with those meaningful questions early in the process, when council is still really deliberating. And, you know, some of the direction as it relates to the strategic plan has already been, you know, set in motion. So that's always our challenge. We're always open to new ideas, both from council and from the community, as to how to get, you know, more people interested and how to make the, I think our biggest challenge is how to make the budget consumable, you know, in a way that people can look at in a meaningful way without spending hours combing through documents.
First of all, I think you did a fantastic job this year. I liked the boards up at public places. I like how the public was engaged. I loved the mayor's video. I thought that was all really a good way to go about things. Maybe next year, and now that we have an economic development officer, which is fantastic, we can maybe do a little bit more engagement around that, different, around the other sectors. So how does this affect a business? How are we going to better the roads or the business environment to create, like, how does this budget create a better business environment for investing in Squamish or for running a business in Squamish? Might be a good way to engage the businesses and then input that's, that actually informs a budget in a way that informs economic development as well. And the other comment is the library letter. We have Lynda.com in there. I'd rather, Estelle's letter was really excellent and pointed out the fact that we had said that we were going to do the children's.
I think we're going to get to Estelle's letter.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Excellent. Just wanted to make sure.
Well, now that we have Conrad here.
Oh, we have Conrad.
Okay. I was just going to say, on the question of the Brennan Park Wi-Fi, it's sourced to an independent contractor at this time.
Okay, well, why don't we get the comment?
Yeah, so let all the comment give a more close description of that. So the question is?
How do we provide Wi-Fi? We got a budget comment on the Wi-Fi not meeting everybody's needs at Brennan Park. So maybe we could go over what we supply there and.
Currently, it's.
Yeah, actually, Karen, don't need the comment, just so you know exactly what it is.
So this is the comment we got. Free Wi-Fi for Brennan Park that is not Shaw. Some of us parents spend a lot of time there and could work at the same time. And so I'm just wondering if that reflects reality or if.
So the Wi-Fi service at Brennan Park is through Shaw, and that was a project going back several years.
But you have to be a client of Shaw to use it, no?
No, you can use it if you're not a client. It's a little more, there's a couple more steps. You have to provide an email address and a phone number. So not everybody likes doing that. There's certainly an option to go to something similar to what we have at the library, where there's no sign-in required. That would be an additional cost to the district, obviously, for, you know, if we're going to provide it on, so that is, that is an option.
What would it take to bump it up there, so there's a little more bandwidth?
So the free, the Shaw Wi-Fi, it comes through Shaw's connection. I think it's a fairly solid connection. I can double-check what the bandwidth is, but I believe it's a fairly good connection.
Which I mean, I've just heard from a few people that said if there's, if there seems to be a load on it, there's a few people with laptops, et cetera, that it slows down quite a bit or gets funky.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering if there's, and also, if we were to source that to ourselves or someone else, like we do at the library, could we up that?
Okay, so I think we'll need to do a bit of research and see just how, how good the connection is at Brennan Park. If we were to provide that connection ourselves, I would definitely look at some type of fiber connection. So there is a cost associated with that.
Can we talk about costs, the use of copper?
I think it's a bit of a challenge, because there would be a bill cost and then a monthly cost. I think the monthly cost, I'd have to go back to, because the, you know.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Lynn?
Yeah, Mayor Heinzman, thank you. I just wanted to point out that with our new economic development officer, part of her portfolio will be the digital strategy, and this is something that will continue to be looked at. You know, it's a product that's a little targeted.
Do you know if we could keep some, I don't know how, maybe some periodic testing on speeds there? Just to see if they are, as for best, is there a?
That's definitely something I can take back to the team, and let's do some testing.
Another comment?
One quick question. So it's copper coming up to the building, and we'd have to go fiber out of that, anyway?
I'd be like, any installation now, I'd be looking at fiber.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, but the connection to the building, is that, is that all copper, or have they updated that?
We do have fiber to the building now for ourselves. And so maybe there's a, I think for the public Wi-Fi, we'd want a separate connection. We'd want to keep those separate.
Thanks.
Well, I had my hand up for another reason, but just on this subject, if we wanted to do something about this this year, is it possible, first of all, to get some kind of rough financial estimates within a timeframe for the budget so that we perhaps allocate some funds? And I recognize it's a bit of a bigger picture, and there's other things to put together, but if we did want to do it this year as opposed to just looking at it this year and doing it next year, could we do it in that timeframe, or could we get at least an estimate so that we can put a place mark in that budget for it?
Yeah, Mayor Heinzman, with respect, I think at this late hour, ideally, if it's a small number, then we could probably shoehorn it in. If it's not, it gets complicated and further delays the budget. That said, we will go back and make it a priority to figure out what the cost could be, and then we could address it later. And in any event, make it a priority for early 2018.
I think, I think what I'm hearing from council, I like this view, I'm hungry. I like this view, is I think we'd like to see a preliminary number. If it's 5,000 bucks, maybe we could figure it out at the end of the day. If it's 20, 30, 40, that's another story altogether. So I think we'd like number, we're not approving the budget till April, so.
Yeah, thanks. So now I'm back to my original point, and that was on the engagement with the businesses. And as somebody that used to own a business in town, within my distant memory, I think, I mean, we do engage the business community, because we engage the community generally. And business owners are also residents, and so they have the opportunity. But I think, from my perspective, one of the things that happened that I think has diffused a lot of the, perhaps, the issues that might arise in the business community is the fact that we pegged the ratio, back to my first term in council, at 2.7, as Matthew said. And that's right on the B.C. average. And so if you read Vancouver media, for example, the business community in Vancouver was up in arms, because for the longest time, the burden of taxation was heavily on the business community. Something like over 6 to 1 versus 2.7 to 1. And now the city of Vancouver, if you follow the Vancouver media, is reducing that by a couple of points a year. And they're now down to somewhere around 4.5 to 1 or something like that to get it to be more equitable. And we pegged it at 2.7 to 1, which was, as I said, right on the B.C. average, and has stayed there since my first term in council. The other thing we did is we lowered the light industrial rate to, I think the ratio is something like 3.5 to 1, which again is right on the B.C. average. So I think, you know, businesses understand costs just like everybody else does. And I think what they're looking for, from my perspective, is kind of a fair distribution between residential and business. And if you get that to start with, then the other things, and the assessments up and down and so forth, I think are a lot easier to handle. And there's been years when I've been on council where the residential taxation in individual homes has gone up, and on businesses it's gone down, just because of the inconsistencies in assessment values and rises in assessment. And while residential might have gone up 35% this year, business might have only gone up 10 or 15% this year. And so that will throw more onto the residential and business by itself.
Can we get a B.C. assessment about the average increase for businesses?
So we, the average increase might be a bit tougher. We do actually do averages every year when we bring you the tax information around what the B.C. average is on rates and ratios.
No, but for example, we were told last week that, or the week before, that the residential average increases almost 40%.
Oh, okay, you mean like the non-market change, or the market change rate?
Yeah.
Yes, we can get that. Leave my system up.
Okay.
There was one last comment I wanted to address. There was one comment from the senior centre, and unfortunately, it was an anonymous comment, so we couldn't respond to this person directly. But they were asking about, they felt they had perhaps missed information about water meter installations based on what they saw on the board. They're asking, "Are meters on public, are meters on public buildings, or is this to implement a program for private homes?" And so this may be an opportunity to just clarify for that person.
Just clarify, this is only for institutional and commercial metering. It's not on private homes.
Multi-governor?
It's on, it's on multi, so yeah, essentially, an apartment building might have a meter for the whole building. Now, whether they meter a great apartment inside, that's up to the strata or the ownership of the building. But yeah, it's, it's not for individual homes.
And we can clarify that comment on our Facebook page as well, just in case that person sees it.
And Christine can probably help you with this one, with the language on that. But no, it is not a water metering, statewide water metering. It is for institutional, commercial, and basically apartments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the comment was just a question? It wasn't a comment whether or not they wanted it or not? It was just a question?
It was just a question to clarify what the boards meant. They could find me adjoining information in the binder. But yes, just to clarify.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Given that overview of the public feedback, we wanted to floor open essentially to discuss any amendments from that feedback.
I mean, the one I heard was with regard to the Wi-Fi at Brennan Park. We don't, do we generally get much feedback about any other Wi-Fi locations? Being adequate or not adequate? Is Brennan Park the only one that's on Shaw, the rest are on our?
I'm going to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's becoming a little.
Can you get your question back?
No. Are there any other Wi-Fi locations that we provide that are, we get comments on in terms of being adequate or inadequate, or places people go, or where's those public Wi-Fi in this public building? I think we have public Wi-Fi in all of our buildings that the public goes into, correct?
Most of our buildings. I think more could be done at the senior centre. We have public Wi-Fi at the adventure centre, at municipal hall, library. There's potential for public works, it's not something that, like, not that many people come into public works. It's more for staff.
Yeah. So the senior centre, what's at the senior centre right now?
I believe we have a dedicated Shaw connection for Wi-Fi, similar to what we have.
That's right.
Yeah, it's slightly different. It doesn't, I don't believe it requires that sign-in. But I'd have to go back and really look at that again. It's, it hasn't been top of my list, you know, with all the other companies.
I reckon Paul Moss is going to make that probably a shift to talk.
Well, that sounds good.
Okay, great, thanks. So besides that, the B.C. at Brennan Park, maybe the senior centre? And we'll consult later, maybe come back.
So I just wanted to update you on a couple of things out of the conversation I just heard. First off, you'd asked me about the market change for business in terms of assessment value. This is raw B.C. assessment data. So how it shakes down into our equations when we deal with capping for other rates, et cetera, may vary from desk. But the residential non-market change through raw data from B.C. assessment was 4.8, almost 4.9%. That's non-market change. Their market change was about 35%. The business other.
So would that make the average about 40? Like, would you add those to the make?
All-in change, 40, yeah. So then the business and other, non-market change was about 3.65, almost 3.7. And their market change is about 27% per total of about 30% adjustment. The, I just also wanted to update you a little bit on, I heard a comment about the budget not being due till April. It is true that by legislation, you're not required to pass this financial plan before May 15. We have talked to council in the past about wanting to ask, to. We have talked to council in the past about wanting to ask to accelerate the passing of the financial plan so that we can get on with tendering and other initiatives that we need to do without delaying our construction season. And that's why one of our key goals today is to get us to a point where we're close enough that we can bring you back a financial plan by law relatively quickly. So keep that on mind as we go through today and let us know if there's any showstoppers.
I was just referencing the timeline that was put on the screen a minute ago.
Yeah, and so that's the taxes that we'll bring after the fact and we'll have that more robust conversation around B C averages at that time, whether the ratios are where you think they should be. Again, last year we talked about stabilizing our ratios. That allows us to use those effective tax rates more robustly where everybody's getting the sort of same impact of, of an increase. So we'll come back and talk about that more fulsomely in April for sure and, and help hopefully alleviate some of council's concerns around that.
Good, thank you.
All right. Next. Over to me. Yeah, back to Christine.
Thank you, council. So as I was reviewing the budget over the week, well, last week, I realized that the conversation around public art policy had not come up. And so I just want to put that back on your radar for a few moments. There are a couple of different provisions in our public art policy. I'm not going to lie, there's some aspects of the public art policy that I don't know if I fully understand the intent. So I'm sorry I keep badgering you with these things. But, and I also need to talk to you about whether you want something outlined in the budget for this. So one of the provisions under section six is around municipal capital projects. And it affords us the, well, it directs us to take one percent of capital projects over a million dollars and allocate that to a public art fund. To essentially, my understanding is to fund future art installations in the downtown.
And maintenance of current art.
Okay. So, and that's where I'm, I'm hoping I can get some clarity on some of the conversations and, and today and we can make sure we're budgeting appropriately for what we're trying to do. The, one of the stipulations on that is that we're looking at growth and upgrade projects only. And we're, generally the way the wording is, I think we're supposed to exclude grant funding portions. What we've been doing essentially, because that's, what we've been essentially doing, last year we put in fifty thousand dollars. And rather than charge each capital project with a set amount, what we've been doing is just pulling those projects, looking at the amount and essentially taxing that contribution. So if you can go to the next screen, please. So I looked at it again this year and the projects over one million dollars that are either growth or improvement related was the T T P project. Just the twenty seventeen portion was one point one million. The Dyke upgrades, two point three million, which there are some arguments that not all that is upgrades. Some of that is replacement and rehab work. But I've put it in here for the benefit of the doubt. And then the water meters is considered a new or emerging project. I've specifically tagged or split projects where we've already contributed. So where we have a project that's carrying forward and it's carrying forward amounts, I've tried to isolate the amounts we've already put to the, to the reserve because they were counted last year, right? So we had already made a contribution on that portion last year. So that came out to about forty-three thousand dollars. We're currently contributing fifty thousand. So I think we're relatively online unless something in line, something further down the list here, council thinks we need to include. So the other ones that carry forwards, the Newport Roads project R twenty, I just took out that portion that we already would have included in last year's equation for the fifty thousand last year. The Tantalus Fire Hall, which again, it's been on our books, it's been deferred or delayed. But again, we've made our contribution for that project already. Water meters and the T T P project, any of the amounts that are carrying forward that we'd already made a contribution on. And then the replacement project, which I consider to be outside the context of what we're looking to do, water meters and annuals or replacements are down the line. So with council's permission, we're looking for guidance or not permission, but with your guidance, we'd like to set the amount that we're contributing to the Public Works Fund.
Public Arts Fund?
Public Arts Fund, yeah, thanks. And then the, the other concern, which we ran into last year, was that we made the contribution to the reserve or the fund, but we made no budget for the expenditures or use of the funds. And so I really need to get some more direction on that piece because we actually, as per legislation, do have to record or, or budget all expenditures and uses of provisions as well. So that's where we had a bit of a misstep last year and some confusion around that. So that's why I want to bring it back to the table and talk about what amount would you like us to either draw from that fund or budget directly? Under section three, it talks about different sources of funds, being budget allocation, C A Cs and donations and partnerships. And these are the lists of things that it could be used for, commissioning and purchasing of art, administration of public art program and ongoing maintenance of the public art program.
So I don't think when we adopted this policy, it was meant to be so complicated. It somehow made it much more complicated about what goes on this project or this project. And, and we need to figure a, a simple formula that doesn't get bogged down. Some of the challenge with setting the expenditures, and the public art committee's talked a lot about this. Obviously, what they've done is they've put X amount of money into a, a maintenance, of the allocated monies every year into a maintenance piece of it. So I can't remember the exact numbers, but they're putting X amount a year in maintenance. If you just look at the, the mosaic just out front of municipal hall, it's actually cost quite a bit of money to fix that. It took a lot of damage with the, the frost this year. So for example, that type of thing. So they take, but the other thing is they, they, they're doing a bunch of smaller projects, but they're also then ideally taking a chunk of it and putting it into reserves so we can build up to a significant piece of public art. And so there's sort of three strategies in there. So in actually in terms of expenditures in a year, the public art committee may be purposely putting X amount in maintenance, X amount into the bank to save up for a big project that you can actually leverage monies for, for a bigger project. And then a certain amount of, so they, they may not have an exact amount that they would like to spend every year. It may, it may fluctuate quite a bit. So actually, and we don't necessarily, the public art committee doesn't necessarily know what that's going to be until they put a proposal fallout for something. So it's, it's not an easy thing just to say, oh, we'll expend fifty thousand dollars a year or twenty thousand dollars a year because it's not known. So in, in one given year, they may have a reserve up and an opportunity to leverage that money because of Canada one fifty or something in the future. And so it may actually all of a sudden in one year be a significant expenditure because monies have been saved up. So I'm looking to you to figure out a way that we can have some.
I would love to revisit the public art policy from a financial perspective. As you write, I do find it difficult to work with in terms of how the legislation works for me and how the public art policy I think is intended to operate. I do run into some roadblocks if we're, if we're dealing with the funds and it's within council's purview to deal with that. One of the suggestions I would have is that we put the fifty thousand dollars just in the budget as a budgeted line item. And any surplus, we drop to the provision. So if you don't use it that year, we drop it to the provision.
So what's in the budget now for public art?
Well, we're putting a fifty thousand dollar contribution to the fund right now, okay? So what I could do instead is put that as available to the public art committee to use that year and what the residual is dropped. So that it drops to the surplus. That would provide me a legal mechanism to do that. So essentially you'd be budgeting at fifty.
I didn't understand that.
So it's, it's around the, it is a practical financial issue that I'm dealing with in that if I put a contribution to a provision or reserve, I have to talk, I have to actually also put any expenditures or draws from that reserve, okay? So what I'm suggesting is we skip the contribution to reserve. We put it as an expense for the year, fifty thousand dollars, and we drop the residual to a reserve.
Maybe explain, drop the residual.
So if there's money left over after the year clears, we would drop that down to the provision. And we could look at setting you up two different provisions, one that's a maintenance type operating provision and one that is a capital reserve that we're holding and maintaining for public art. But we need to define that a bit better in the public art policy because I am struggling with the intent of what you're looking to do.
Yeah, could you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yes.
And I think you might have just answered the question, but when we were talking about the forty-three thousand one oh four number, if I understood you correctly, that number is just a number then we just add to the budget and we get that from taxation or fifty thousand dollars rounding it up a little bit. So I guess the other alternative, I hadn't really, maybe not understood that completely. Because the other alternative, when you talk about these large projects, you take the top line, the T T P one point one three five, we're probably going to borrow for that, would be to borrow a hundred and one percent of that.
You could. I have to work that through the ministry. They may not agree that that is correct, but we could try that, yes.
I, I think the one, was it just to create?
Exactly, some.
Parameter of, of.
Set mechanism to do that.
Yeah, and it may not be the mechanism we want to use. I think it may be something, it seems easier almost just to put a number in every year instead of.
Yeah, and then I'll make sure it drops to public art, like to the public art provision that we hold. Is that basically the intent and are you comfortable with the fifty thousand-ish or would you like to go to the forty-three and, you know, to more the letter of this or? Because there are parts of section three that also talk to us, providing contributions for the coordinator and other aspects, which I, I am a little bit ignorant to what is being done right now with the public art and between the arts council.
Separate funds.
So the one thing about just putting a set number in is that as the community grows, you want to make sure that that number falls with it. And so, so even if it's not explicitly stated in the, the policy as one percent of capital projects, there needs to be at least a review or a target, like the target of sort of one percent of capital projects is what you're going for. And right now that kind of aligns. As we get bigger, what is that target? Because you don't want to say, you know, three councils from now, it's still fifty thousand possibly. You might want to see that rise with inflation. So do you just put an inflationary number on it? It rises with inflation or?
In individuals' ears, there may be a, just more in, or less.
Or a lesson. So somehow it needs to address that because I don't think it's supposed to be just static for the next twenty years.
Right now, we do bring this back and we, we do this exercise. This is what we did with you last year too, and we rounded it out to fifty thousand. So essentially it's a touch point to say, I think the fifty thousand still is in the ballpark of what the policy says. And it's up to council whether they want to, you know, bring it down a little bit or stay with the fifties sort of the question today.
So is it just, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding why we would base a public art policy number on borrowing based on what we use back up there as a company. But.
Capital projects.
Yeah, like why would we base that on capital projects that are transient? So our water we use aren't going to be next year. So where are we going to get one percent? How is it going to be continued from, as council earlier says, that's going to be continued with growth? Wouldn't it be better to grow the community public art budget with community amenity contributions as opposed to, which is, it is a community amenity public art? Is there a provision in community amenity contributions that we need to when we revise the policy as opposed to basing it on borrowing which doesn't occur year to year? So it needs, it can't be, I, it seems random to.
The one percent is a fluctuating number depending on how many capital projects you have to qualify under this.
Yeah, not before it's more stable. And as, maybe it's, maybe it's tied to community amenity contributions as opposed to capital projects that may, may not be, be the same amount every year.
So if I may, before I give Linda, public art, so often when a community amenity contribution comes forward in a public art context, it's often public art, and the city of Vancouver, it's related to that project. So city of Vancouver actually came up and talked to the public art committee about this. Councilor D O heads the front side of the, so, and essentially what, you want to make sure that there's monies in the general pot. So the general built environment gets built up and not just the new developments. So there, I think there's a marriage between the C A C portion that could go to the public art and a policy that clearly helps articulate and, and build, the built environments currently exists as well.
Exactly. And I'm just thinking, so that the community amenity contribution, if I may.
Yeah.
Community amenity contributions exactly are project specific, but maybe, is, is there anything that says it's project specific? I thought it was just for the community.
We can, we can, we can.
We can set that, right? Someone who revised the policy maybe set it so that it can be for general, you know, for enjoyment. Because it's supposed to be, community amenity contributions are supposed to be for the enjoyment of the general community.
And currently we don't have any specific public art, you know, C A C policy, but we have a, a general amenity which could in theory go to public art, in theory go to a recreation facility. But we're going to revisit the C A C policy. Is that very clear?
Mayor Heinzman, if I could, maybe suggest that revisiting the public art policy as well at a committee level and digging more into that. And then with today's focus being getting down to the budget number, that would be helpful. I'm just concerned about time.
Well, I think, what I'll do is I'll ring to that public art committee, just so we can sort of evaluate based on what they're trying to do in terms of these pockets, to try to move some stuff forward. And then, and then we'll bring it forward to a policy committee meeting somewhere, if you can find it and help.
Thank you. That would be helpful for us too, if we can, if the finance team can kind of weigh in and help guide some of that for practicality purposes too. That would be certainly helpful. So if I'm hearing, okay, are we okay to leave the fifty thousand in, but we'll take it from a contribution to reserve to, to a public art line right now? And we would take the, if there's any residual or surplus, we would take that down to surplus at year end that is designated specifically for public art? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, and I think if, if there's a reserve for public art, the committee's sort of earmarked X amount per year for maintenance, X amount to build up, to do a big project, X amount to do in sort of annual projects. But I don't know if we need to have three different, we don't, we can all put in one, it's just through the policy of the committee earmark what's going to maintenance, what's going to a big capital.
I'll probably put it in the provision area from a financial perspective then. That gives us a little more latitude to move those funds from the operational and capital areas. So, okay. Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next, we want to move on to other amendments and follow-up since our public meeting. And with that, I would like to hand it back to Christine in relation to our debt service.
Thank you, council. So the, the great part of doing the budget early is that we have earlier information and we get started on the projects. The downside is that we have to make a lot of assumptions when we first do the budget. So when we propose, when we started doing this, building this budget back in August, September, we had to use the budgeted borrowing for twenty sixteen as our assumption for what we carry into the twenty seventeen year. As we looked at the rates and as we had the, oops, surprise from B C assessment around our twenty thousand dollars assessment, I've gone back in and had a more robust look at debt to make sure that the assumptions we were making still made sense now that we have more information at the year end. We know a little bit more about what we're borrowing this year versus what we're having to defer. The outcome of that is that we've made a couple of different changes. So we had originally looked at the August M F A rates. They have gone up since, so we made that adjustment. It was based on the twenty sixteen budget. We now have some more articulated information. It's not finalized, but we have brought down our borrowing need specifically for twenty seventeen now versus what will be deferred to twenty eighteen as part of the carry forward projects that we're pulling in for twenty eighteen, which by the way, still has to be done before we can finalize this. And the twenty-year amortization period, frankly, I'm rarely recommending to you anymore to go twenty-year. So we usually put our bylaws at twenty-year for our loan authorizations. But really, I, I try to encourage you to go fifteen years or less with our borrowing so that we, one, incur way less interest expenses and two, so that we're not stretching out and layering over twenty years borrowing and getting closer to our caps. So I've made those three adjustments. The outcome of that is that we actually were able to reduce our debt service quite a bit and now have a lower tax revenue impact of about one point two percent. So that helps our overall equation and should offset the B C assessment hit on effective tax rate side. So where we were looking like, oh, oh, that's going to start pushing our five up, this helps counteract that and we're now at about four point five percent estimated effective rate with that.
That include the B C assessment adjustment for S O D C lands?
Yes.
I'm not sure council got to date on that.
Sure, I can, I can walk you through that. I had a call from B C Assessment. As you know, the counter, or the cornerstone properties or the S O D C lands as we know them, as we affectionately call them still. The, there were a number of properties in there. Last year, B C Assessment frankly did me a huge favor and they made sure that they included the supplement early enough that I could tax the broader population at a lower rate because we knew that property would be supplemented into the roll last year. That was a favor to me, to us, to this municipality, because it took them outside of some of their normal ways that they calculate and add assessment values to the roll. On top of that, the property subdivided and roll numbers changed and a number of factors came into play that caused an, an error in the completed roll, close to about twenty million dollar of double counting of a roll. They put the completed roll out.
People reacting.
Yeah. It is a lot of properties, so it is a big assessment base. So the completed roll went out and that's kind of the point of completed roll. And it's one of the reasons I encourage you not to get too honed in and tied to the completed. And it's one of the reasons I encourage you not to get too honed in and tied to the completed role. Because one of the purposes of the completed role is to put it out there, get the feedback, find out what's wrong, what's right, what people are going to appeal. But this was a big one. B C assessment is aware it's a big one. I need to cut them a little bit of slack because frankly, I know they were trying to help us last year with ensuring that our rates included that amount last year. The net effect is that it's a, it's basically, it was a $46 million assessment and completed role. And that's going down to about a $26 million assessment for those properties.
So in terms of our estimation of revenue, that?
It had taken us up just about 1% of effective tax increase, or sorry, 0.7% of the effective tax rate increase. This debt now takes that, counteracts it.
Yeah.
And helps us deal with it so that we're not outside of our marks and our targets.
So I didn't want council to go, well, minus 0.12 is three something. We had this 0.7 jump because of the.
B C assessment issue.
Misassessment of the.
Correct. Yep. So we're down. Now our estimate, and again, still please, an estimate, is that we would have to increase all of our tax rates about 4.5%. Assuming you don't put anything, too many more things in the budget today.
You won't mind if I card that on the table?
So any questions on that? Let me throw in a chat.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, hold on, go ahead, Jen.
Well, just, but it didn't affect last year? That was.
No, last year was correct.
It was about to happen.
Yeah, no, last year was correct. It's what happened when they layered the roles in this year with the new P I Ds and everything. They didn't make the connection that they already had old P I Ds with rolling, as I understand it. I mean, they, they talked a lot of different, they had about four different factors impacting this particular property. And, you know, it was one of those absolute ideal storms for an acre.
If the assessment had gone up to 46 million.
We'd be, we'd be excited.
Well, or we'd be, nevermind. But it's 26.
Christine definitely addressed the, the general fund. I also wanted to bring your attention to the, the water fund and sewer funds. There was a decrease in relation to the debt service of 62,000 for the water fund and 3,000 for the sewer fund. But I'm about to roll into our further amendments in relation to the utilities. So I just wanted to draw attention to those changes in relation to the water and sewer. That might be my error. I think sewer went up a little bit with our other adjustments because they didn't have a deferral. So I think that that might be a factor. I'm sorry about that. But yeah, the interest rate increase amortization change should all be positive impacts on this.
On the sewer fund? Just on the sewer fund?
Just on the sewer fund. Everything else is a reduction.
Yeah.
With absolute respect that you're chairing this meeting.
Yeah.
I know that we are moving on to budget amendments, but the library's feedback came as part of budget feedback. And I know Estelle is here and she has a job.
Sure, yeah.
I'm just wondering if we can make sure that we address this and that she can go back to what she needs to do rather than sitting here.
That is fine. I was assuming we were going to get to the police in, but maybe we should just go to that right now?
That would be great. Actually, because we did have the letter, I believe, with the public feedbacks on that.
Okay. All right. Then we should.
And I'm not sure if we're, if you're looking to staff to address something along that line or?
I'm assuming, as we have.
Counselor Elliott?
So I, I think what happened is that certainly I dropped the ball a bit in one of our meetings where the budget came back. And I think we, when the library board came to present, we didn't make any decisions right then and there about what to keep in the budget. And I think we all assumed that it would come back for another discussion. A lot of those items went below the line, but then we, I didn't bring it back and Robin missed that meeting as well. Where we would have had the opportunity to say, do we really want all these budget items below the line? Or do we want to move all of them above the line? And so we didn't really give the library request that level of debate. A lot of them are service level increases, so that may impact council's decision about whether they want to do that this year or not. So some are above the line, some are below. But we just sort of didn't have that robust conversation about priorities and which ones we want to have above the line. So I know that Estelle has written a letter on behalf of the board, not to complain, but only to be able to maybe bring some of those priorities to light again and that we're, they're carefully considered.
Yeah, I, I, all of the things below the line are carefully considered and above the line. I mean, we don't do any of this. And we, we have many meetings talking about all the below the line items. And it wasn't that we were ignoring library issues. We could have brought something above the line at any time. So. And we can certainly talk about it now.
Thank you. I'd like to put forward that we have the children's area before the Lynda.com, so to open the Lynda.com, which is an adult program that bring the children's program back in at $6,000. Worth that.
Can you, can you just outline what the Lynda.com uses the? Children's services. Okay. So just give me one moment. So this is an expansion upon, above and beyond the improvements, Estelle, do you want to join us? Above and beyond the improvements that we saw last year or this year?
So it's line number five, the services level increases in general.
If I may.
Yeah. Which is the.
Lynda.com is a learning resource that enables libraries to provide digital literacy support to the community, equipping users with the skills they need to keep pace in today's digital environment. It's a service that is increasingly prevalent in public libraries. And there have been numerous requests from the public to offer this to patrons. And it fits within the district's guiding principle of social inclusion and connectivity and aligns to the library's goal that the library will be recognized within the community as a trusted source for inspiration, information, and connection. So that is Lynda.com.
Linda, you want to just add to that?
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. We just wanted to point out that Lynda.com is directly linked to the digital strategy, which is why it was put above the line from management's perspective.
And, and Estelle, with regard to the, the children's area recognition of better and what already happened.
The children's programming.
Children's. After school technology-based digital literacy, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it's, it's programming versus in capital.
That's right. It's the programming in partnership with the school district. And we're really supportive of this. And so some of the programming time would be spent doing those kind of after school digital literacy programs. And the school district is going to be contributing into this project because they, I think, themselves recognize they can't do everything kind of at school-based.
Is it connected at all with the Lynda.com program?
No, it's kind of apples and oranges. So Lynda.com is a piece of software. A lot of libraries have it. So library patrons are expecting this piece of software really. And it allows them to do online learning from anywhere. As long as they have a library card, they can do it at home. Just go through our website and learn how to, you know, use publishers, set up spreadsheets. Just so it helps with access to learning. It's a good piece of kit. And then the programming though, just kind of leverages all the work we've been doing over the last few years to, you know, support the younger kids and really make sure. You see, software is great, but you also need people to kind of make sure that the digital divide is really minimized because you need people to help, you know, people learn how to use technology. And so the after school program, for example, would allow a lot of those kids to get that one-on-one support to learn how to use.
So what age groups does that program cover?
After school.
The children's program.
Eight to fifteen. And I don't know the price offhand. It would be in the budget submission.
Yeah.
The Lynda.com is an annual subscription. We are in discussions with other libraries. We're all trying to band together in order to encourage the supplier to bring the cost down, which I think we're going to.
I have Doug Peach and that's it.
My question was just about the number of the programming.
So we need 6,456, I think. Was the number I had?
The library, yes, 6,456. For the expansion of children's and youth services.
And Lynda.com was on it?
6,000. 6,000. And then the, the other one that was here was the increase to library circulation assistant of 8,400. And I think that was in conjunction with a capital ask for the kiosk over at Brennan Park.
Doug, you're good?
Yep, thanks.
Peter?
And there is a coding aspect to that after school program as well, isn't there?
Yeah.
It's a technology, it is the children's after school programming using Lynda.com in order to use it just. So the Lynda.com is a specific adult learning, I, I use that. All the universities provide Lynda.com, but all of the resources in Lynda.com I find, that can be found free online anyways. So a lot of the universities have free programming that is very similar to Lynda.com. But things like learning Excel spreadsheets and all the new, it helps you learn about programs. So it is extremely valuable and definitely an adult learning tool. But right now, as far as if we had to pick a budget item that was going to affect digital literacy, I would pick the eight to 15-year-old and allow adults to find out other online resources if we had to pick one or any other.
Any other moments?
Could you pick both?
I could pick, I would pick both.
Well, you didn't put forward both.
I would put forward both.
Yeah, I, I, I was sort of going there to be frank. I'm too soft, what can I tell you?
Yeah, exactly.
But, but between the two of them, if it came to a choice, I tend to go with the program. And just because it's being leveraged with the school board and so we're getting some leverage out of it. And it's hitting a, what I think is a real target for that library is the. So, so if it came down to one or the other, I would go with the programming. But if there's a way to do both because I can see value to both, then I would look at that as well.
Can I put forward both, please?
Well, we, our one's already in, so we just need a motion to.
Yeah, a motion.
Unless you wanted to take one out.
No.
Just motion to include the expansion of children's and youth services program.
To the forward motion.
Moved and seconded. Peter, to them.
So the other thing though is that the kiosk expansions, Brennan Park and the staff that went along with that, they went below the line. We moved the space improvements and the mobile shelving to 2018, but we didn't, didn't move any of those other things into a further year budget. We just dropped them. So, you know, if we didn't do Lynda.com this year, would we put it in the budget for next year, right? So I think that was the more wholesome discussion that we didn't have as a council was, we just put them below the line, but maybe we should have put them in 2018 or 2019 so we didn't lose them.
And maybe that's a general question to staff, the below the line items, how were they incorporated in the five-year match question?
I mean, Mayor Heinzman, essentially what I've done is for any items that were below the line and indicated by council they want brought above, they were. Or if there was indication that they were to be moved to 2018, then they would move to 2018. Other than that, they're, they're dropped off.
Dropped off. Oh, yeah. I mean, the assumption that they were just not this year that we were going to consider them.
We have a point on the agenda where we can have a bit more of a quick look at the future, if we can get there on time, to have a quick look at the future. Because as we go to roll the financial plan bylaw out, we want to make sure there's nothing really concerning to council that might show up in those lists of things that are in future years. So we'll have, we were looking at that being a fairly quick exercise just to make sure there's no points of concern because obviously we'll readdress this in 20, for the 2018 financial plan, but.
I think there's a lot of below the line items that I think we ought to consider within the five-year net financial plan. And I certainly didn't think we were just getting rid of them perpetually. That's.
Well, yeah, whether they, they go to the plan that we adopt this year, or I guess the important thing is that they get brought back for future consideration. And I would think that, and this would not be unique to the library, but it would be up to department managers if, I mean, how many times did we look at that sidewalk thing before we finally got a pass? And it kept coming back to us as a, as a department priority. And finally we said yes. So I would think a lot of the onus for that would be on individual departments to bring things forward, notwithstanding the fact that they weren't funded the year before. It's not necessarily a kiss of death. It's just that we just didn't have the monies that year.
And I think that's the communication. It's not a kiss of death. It doesn't mean, it's not on people's radar. But it would be helpful if there's actually reference in the five-year financial plan.
So in the library's case, if there was something that we didn't approve this year, it could come back this next year. Be up to the library to bring it back. Pardon my ask.
And that's my turn.
So just looking forward, Estelle, the expanded, expansion of the children's youth services, that would be every year? Or is the school board only committed to one year or is it? Is it, so Lynda.com would be.
If the program improves to be really successful and useful and well-loved, we would want to see it continue.
All right. So right now it's there for a year, but you imagine that it would be ongoing. And then Lynda.com is every year $6,000 unless we can work with bill collectors to bring it back.
So, so if the, if the school board doesn't fund their portion of this, then this in theory would come off the library budget down the road?
Yeah, we've, I think we've had like a letter of intent or something already from the school district that they're going to contribute time and staff and equipment to this.
Right now it's reflecting as a service level.
Yeah, they've done that before and then hold the money, so.
Right now we're reflecting.
Then we end up funding a whole thing. So this is, we, we've been burned by that.
I think we would probably scale back the program then. So we wouldn't buy all new pieces of equipment if we can't afford them.
As Christine was mentioning, right now it's in as a, as a service level change. So we brought in in 2017 and can continue at that level unless indicated otherwise.
Unless council only wants to put it in as one-year program, that is an option as well.
I think, I mean, from my point of view, I don't think for council's feedback is, if this is essentially being presented as a partnership with the school district, that if the school district's still in this partnership, we're willing to fund this. If they're not, we're not willing to fund that whole thing or a portion of it. If they, or someone else isn't coming up with their share of the program.
I think the thing right now is flexible enough that we can fit the program to the fund.
That's what I was saying. That's what I was saying. So the, the school districts are saying, we're going to do this. We're bringing in X amount of money to the library to do this. The school district calls for funding, our funding goes away too.
I disagree with that. I think that we should include the funding and then whenever digital literacy, then the library can afford to the kids, if they need to move the program to the library or change the technology, that our funding contributes to that. Even if it's for digital literacy and operating Lynda.com, we still have that extra resource and that those extra funds to be able to support digital literacy. And I think that we're going to be having more and more requests like this from the library to keep our community apprised and current with technology so that we can keep them in the job force. I mean, it offers a, a space and it's only, it's $8,000 to actually contribute to, to digital literacy. And that has to be in our digital strategy somewhere.
Yeah, I, I actually think it gives the library board more leverage to say that our money is tied to their contributions. I actually think that we should remain pretty firm that the school board needs to step up with staff, time, and equipment. And we will provide the cash funding to go along with that. And I actually think that, that the library board can leverage that to get what they need from the school district more than just a letter of intent. And because this would represent a service level increase for us and we don't want to put it in our budget as such. If we can't get the program as it's been imagined and discussed with the school board, I think we want the, the full meal deal and get it funded to, to that level. So I'm, I'm hesitant to approve a service level increase unless I know the school board's bringing their, their half of it to the table.
Yeah, I've got a number of hands. And it doesn't mean that in the future we can't consider additional funding should the school district fail. But this particular funding is tied to that. Ted, Peter, Susan?
Yeah, a service level increase. And what Karen said is what I'm thinking. If the school board doesn't come through, and you're right, it gives us a little more leverage. But I wouldn't want to see a service level increase if this deal doesn't go through just to go into the library. It'd be nice to see you have more, but it's not 8,000. It's 20,000, some thousand, isn't it?
6,000 or more, 160, 6,000, sorry.
6,400.
6,400.
How much was it? 6,400. Oh, 6,400. Well, that's Lynda.com.
Both, both.
They're both around 6,000.
About 6,000. And yeah, I just, I concur with, with Karen. I, I like, you know, I like what you say too about, about, you know, maintaining it no matter what. But I think we need to apply a little bit of leverage here and hold them to their word considering past history. And just saying, it's tied together. Can you, just with respect to the LOI we got from them, does it, does it say any timeframe? Is it dated for one year or is it open-ended or?
Oh, I wouldn't want to say. I can send it to you.
It is interesting to see how they, how they raise it.
I mean, I guess how we're seeing it is an increasing staffing hours and programming hours to deliver programming that helps. hours to deliver programming that helps, you know, a major percentage of the community. If this, you know, if for some reason it all goes pear-shaped with the school board, well, we wouldn't have that person doing work without the program, right? So there'd be a reduction in that person's hours, right? The programming wouldn't happen without the partnership. Unless there's an alternative way of structuring the programming to do it with those symbols. There are a lot of kids in town, there's a lot of requests that our school supports with these children.
Yeah, I think we all agree that. Sue, Lynda.
Thanks, Sue. I feel like we just found out that there was school board support and we were just willing to support it without the school board support and then we found out the school board and now we're tying it to the school board. I'd prefer to give the funding and, and, you know, and, you know, we are gonna have to increase the funding for digital literacy. There's, and no doubt that technology's expensive, staff is expensive, and technology is changing so rapidly that we really do have to support that within our community. You know, whether it be in a hub or, but the library, make the library a hub for digital literacy and it's gonna cost money. So, you know, $6,000 is a bargain and if, we're gonna have to increase that at some point. And whether it's tied to the school board or not, I think that relying on school board funding when the school board can barely afford textbooks and textbooks, they're gonna really, you know, they, even though they should prioritize, it's gonna be, I, you know, I think relying on outside funders to provide digital literacy for our community is a difficult thing and that, you know, even though it'd be nice to be able to say, yeah, the school board is gonna contribute X amount of dollars in perpetuity, we're gonna pull our funding.
Can we, we're talking about sixty-four hundred dollars. We're talking about trying to make sure that, do something to keep the school board interested so it's not just sixty-four, it's actually a robust company. And that should they not, we can come back and consider what may need to be considered to deliver the service if we want it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. I would make this contingent on school board funding or school board assistance or contribution and leave it at that and not consider the service, service level increase for the year-to-year decision on that basis. And if they did not want to opt in one year, then I think our message to the library is you might come back with an alternative proposal, you know, because I think that's what I'm hearing. But all I'm saying is that's a separate discussion. And we would just consider it separately.
This is a sixty-four hundred, right? I think we're on the same page, so, so let's, if we're on the same page, let's, let's.
Did we ever vote?
We haven't yet, but I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna call the vote. Can you remind me what's on the table? On the table is adding six, four, five, six, to leverage the partnership with the school district for the after-school programming for use.
Contingent with their participation.
That's contingent. Sorry, just to clarify, my understanding is that currently we're going to do that as a non-recurring special project to be revisited.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure it's recurring.
Okay.
But as long as the partners are at the table. And if something, if, if something changes, then the school board comes back and goes, school district's no longer partnering on this, we still think this is valuable, they may come back with a higher number, right? But I think we need to be mindful of that increase should it come back to us or that partnership should it leave. I think that's where council's questioning. Okay? Okay. Is everyone clear?
Yes.
So it's recurring as long as?
Yeah, we've got it, the, the intent is to leverage.
And the, and the intent is to keep going. We, we'd like to see it keep going. It's just there is a contingency on that.
Understood, yeah.
Okay. Another question, others in favor? Pose, motion carries. And I don't, yes?
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. For clarity, the Brennan Park kiosk and corresponding staffing, council would like to see in 2018 budget?
We want to see the five-year financial plan and discuss with the library then.
Thanks, Estelle. Thanks, Estelle.
Are there anything else in that, council, is there anything, and Estelle, is there anything else in the public feedback side of things that we might skim over?
Not to my knowledge, Mayor Heinzman, unless council has anything in particular.
No.
Concerns?
With that, I'll quickly go over the amendments to the utilities budget outside of the debt that we've already discussed. In relation, and all the changes are in relation to the capital plan. Powerhouse Springs well three replacement, that's a $0 impact. It was sitting as a, an operating special project, but my understanding of the project has expanded to such that it wasn't just, they're replacing the entire well, it wasn't just an expansion of the current well. So that's been moved from operating to capital. There is a $0 impact, it's the same, same funded through fees, but just in, in the capital plan as opposed to operating. We received some additional information in relation to some of the waterfront DCC projects, specifically in relation to the Peninsula Road B water main. That particular project increased, the cost increased, and therefore the municipal contribution increased by $1,500. And in relation to the Peninsula Water Main interim second connection, that project is no longer going forward, so we've had a decrease of just under $2,000 in relation to the municipal contribution on that particular project.
And if I can just step in here, essentially, we've made a couple changes because in our negotiations with the developer for the SODC lands, they've decided some projects are going ahead now and some are not, and we've just made the tweaks for this. That's all this is about, it's a contractual obligation.
Okay.
Pretty minor tweaks, really.
Yeah, they're very minor. Okay.
In terms of our impact, yes?
Yes. And with that, unless there was any other concerns, all right?
So my, my goal is for council to break for an hour of lunch, so just, you know.
Yeah, we're actually hoping to wind up probably in the next five to 10 minutes if that works for council.
As we've discussed, generalized fund highlights, the, the increase to our general property tax requirement is now sitting at 6.5% and we've got the highlight in relation to the change in debt service, which Christine has already discussed. So as we, we've been over before, we, we know the, the service level and new initiative impacts on our tax revenue requirements, and we've discussed our expectations in relation to the, the assessment base, and we've also discussed the fact that at this point, we don't know what the changes will mean to the individual taxpayers we're making our estimates.
And our estimate is 4.5 based on, in terms of tax rate increase on classes, not how it affects average households, okay?
Moving forward.
I can't say it enough. I said it will still be misunderstood.
Capital plan fast facts, we're looking at $1,588,515 in direct contributions from taxation, and that is a just over $81,000 increase in direct contribution over last year.
And I'm just gonna have a quick word with council, just to remind you that our target had been to go up about another $125,000 here, so we're a little bit below our long-run financial sustainability targets. And on top of that, we took out the 1% contribution to capital increase, so we're making about a million dollars, but we didn't increase that. The rest of the financial plan reflects us again going back to increasing that in future years.
With that, the amendments that we've made to the, the capital plan, and these were, these were items that were discussed the 23rd of January and implemented, but just bringing them back to our attention. We've determined the tantalous fire hall roof, tantalous fire hall overhead door replacement and the Brennan Park arena backup generator are being funded by short-term borrowing. Entrance sign, $0 impact, but I have determined that there is $12,000 in deferred revenue available from the, the insurance proceeds we received on the previous entrance sign and the remainder, the $8,000 will be funded from surplus. As we discussed, our Dentville Community Park project, the, the impact decreased taxation 66,960 and then we brought in this smoke block parking lot, which used that, the, that, what was freed up from the Dentville Community Park. Further amendments, property acquisition, this was an error on my part, it was in the operating side, special projects, and it should have been in the capital plan. Again, $0 impact, it is fully funded from the land sale reserve.
And the goal here was just to have an allowance so that if we did see a property of interest, we could act on that. It will have no bottom line impact because we would be taking that from the Land Cell Reserve. But again, legally, we need a mechanism. If we're going to make an expenditure, we have to have a mechanism in the financial plan.
Next up, we have brought Aristotle Drive, the wiring and paving back into the capital plan. I will note that this is a $0 impact to taxation and I will allow Mr. Buckston to provide a little more detail in relation to that particular amendment.
That simply, when we checked last year, mid, early to mid last year, we did a quick look and we didn't think we could draw the funds from the securities that we retained from the developer. When we actually went back into the paper copies and found that 14 boxes of material and weighed through it, it is actually, we hold securities related to Aristotle decor so we can use those funds to fix the top lift and the wiring on streetlights.
And lastly, we had small changes in relation to these affecting the taxation waterfront DCC projects. So same, same formulas before, we're just adjusting the cornerstone progress.
Yes.
Both of these projects were moved to 2018. Service level changes. So our service level fast facts, that's a net impact on requisition, is now sitting at $629,356. And the only change that has been made is in relation to the transit expansion that increased by just over $9200. And that was based on updated information from, which I think you're gonna hear about shortly. Yes. All right. Next, in relation to special projects, our net impact on requisition is $476,806. We have the target of $650,000, last year's level was $547,000. So we have decreased both in relation to last year as well as from our target and I believe.
So the only thing there is to recognize is that we were looking to try and get it up to 650 to start stabilizing our rates, so again, just a little bit of a back step on our financial policies. We're looking at year two through five, we're still assuming 650 in those years to try and get back on that, back on track for that.
The amendments that have been made to special projects include the Arts Council building upgrade of $5,000, Arts Council fee for service that has a nil impact because it's being funded from surplus, that was essentially carried forward from 2016. BMX Foundation grant flow-through, so $0 impact. We had further information come to light in relation to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, so that particular project has decreased by $10,000. The affordable housing contract, the, the contract total for 2017 increased $50,000 to 100, but that is being funded from our Affordable Housing Reserve. So the impact taxation was a decrease of 50,000. We added our marine strategy scoping to our Economic Development Services contract and we also added the $5,000 in relation to the Agricultural Reserve Strategy.
So that was more to 2,500 at the last counting.
Great, okay.
Because the SVB is contributing, we have a contract.
Okay. We'll just put in a dollar.
The motion, it was, we changed the motion, came to council last week, we changed the motion to 2,500.
Are we running that project or are we contributing it out?
Well, it's sort of being run through the Food Policy Council, what's their name of the group, but we're doing it with our staff's help. And we said we helped with vehicle and our GIS and some support and staff support in that way, but I think the Food Council has been up.
I was just wondering if we should be reflecting 5,000 with a 2,500 contribution or if it's just a grant out of 2,500?
I think it's just a work plan allocation.
Okay, so we're just contributing to another body. Great, thank you.
Well, I'm not 100%, but we might be the one directly contracting, but they're doing it, yeah.
Yeah, we might need to check because I'm not sure if the province wants, checks coming from two, we might actually delete it, so it'd be best to check with them.
With Sarah?
With Sarah.
Okay, no, we can do that offline.
It needs to be coordinated at the SVB.
Yeah.
Like, they might send us a check and we end up contracting it out.
Sure, okay, we'll look at that. It's not a material enough amount that anyone's probably gonna authorize about anyway, it's just we try and get it right if we can.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, wait, hold on, uh, I'm just talking.
Is that a poll we've done talking about?
Uh, there's something, there's something in there I still want to talk about, but that's why I can't.
I want to talk about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, that's the only one that really concerns me, is not having a Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
We, we do have one, just to clarify.
Yeah, there is.
It's just that in talking to Fire Chief Stoner, he no longer needs the full amount. I think we budgeted 30, 20.
Okay.
Budgeted 20 and he only has 10,000 left of work to do, so if he's comfortable that that's sufficient.
Perfect, thank you.
So just on the affordable housing, and I appreciate we're taking this now to be affordable, do we, I don't want to get into a public art scenario with affordable housing, so if, if, in 45 months from now, there's a project that we want to invest our affordable housing fund into, I'm being hypothetical now, how do we ensure that we can do that through budget?
If, if it's sufficient enough, I, I would probably have to amend the financial plan because that is actually, it does, we actually have that set up as a formal reserve, the Affordable Housing Reserve. So I don't have a lot of leeway on that, I would have to amend the financial plan.
But we need to figure out an mechanism that we can be nimble with, a reserve, particularly an Affordable Housing Reserve, if, if a situation comes up in a year and we want to be able to, say, invest X amount to get 10 more rental units, whatever the scenario may be, we have to be nimble enough with our financial plan to react like that. So how do we make sure we do that?
If it's a, if it's a major dollar item, we would, we would look at amending the financial plan. So if we were actually gonna fund the full.
Two million dollar project or something.
Exactly, or even up to like 50,000, 100,000, we might have to consider amending just because I think, I want the mechanism to draw from the reserve and use the reserve funds.
Well, how can we set that up so we can be nimble in those situations without having to go through a huge amendment process?
I don't know that there's a great mechanism for that. I mean, you've seen what we've done with the land reserve where we've kind of run it in and back out and assumed it might get used and then when it doesn't get used, we just don't draw it. So that is one opportunity you could do. Right now, we are looking at the contract person coming in and doing a, a recrimination, so I think this year it might be, forgive me for saying, but a little bit premature to assume that something's gonna come and go yet. But I'm fine, we can amend the financial plan if we have to, if it's significant enough or can't be handled with a contingency.
I know, I get the situation like with the Public Art Reserve funding where we didn't account for expenditures, we're just putting money in a reserve and it handcuffed the Public Art Reserve from actually getting nimble.
Yeah, well, if you'd like to put an operating budget in for affordable housing, that is an option. Because right now, it is really our affordable housing, we had set it up as a reserve under the impression that it would be used for capital expenditures. We've since read the bylaw and it's relatively loose, which is why we're doing the, but it was originally set up to be more around, like the contribution to center point and.
Mayor Heinzman, again, for clarity, is council considering something like a shovel running project so that it would be capital? In which case?
Definitely want, I'd amend the financial plan preferably. Unless you have something in mind right now that we can factor in?
When we allocate it in the budget, it doesn't have to be specific to a project, can we not just say expenditures on affordable housing up to this amount?
You can, you could put in a line item for affordable housing things and have a draw from, like I said, the same as the land sale reserve, if we have enough reserve right now. Which is getting a little bit dicey because right now, I think we're sitting at about 160 for that reserve when the final year end comes. It's not that robust right now.
Depending on when stuff gets built and stuff.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can understand with smaller projects, and public art, for example, we had that discussion earlier about some of these are relatively small things. I'm not sure that it's not a bad thing to have to amend the financial plan because we're talking about a major project, probably the funding is gonna come from different sources and maybe we should be having a real discussion about it and have council amend it. I don't know that it's that kind of a thing that'll cause the deal to fall apart. I mean, it's not that big of a deal.
Generally, it takes time for these things to come to fruition anyway. So I, I certainly appreciate your comments, that is the intent, it's that we would go to the public and, and give them an opportunity to weigh in if we were doing something of a major significance.
Karen, yeah, my question was, is it more onerous than just three readings and adoptions? Do I have to go to the comments approval like?
Through the mayor, that's something we haven't really talked about in the past because we make it a promise to not amend our financial plan. There's a lot of prioritization holistic review that we do as we go through the financial plan process and generally, I'm not a huge fan of amending the financial plan, I'm not gonna lie to you. And if we do, I do think that there needs to be a certain amount of public engagement or, or, or at least bringing that to. or, or at least bringing that to the public's attention in a more robust way. Because I have seen municipalities where they amend it daily and I can tell you they're not in a good financial situation because they do that.
Well, my question is just like, is it three readings and adoption?
It can be, yes, there's...
Okay, so it's not, it's not like we have to wait six months for the province to come back to it or whatever.
No, there's no ministerial oversight.
So, yeah, let's let the reserve build up.
The only thing I'll let you know is that on your financial statements, the original financial plan is what's booked and comparative on your financials. So you would look like you're overspend on your financials, but if we'd gone through the formal legal process, that's fine.
Fair.
All right. Lastly, we wanted to touch base looking into the future. So looking at 2018 to 2022, essentially, well, 2018 through 2021.
We're just looking really for a very quick gut reaction list to some of the papers that we sent out to you and the reference 7A-4. If there's anything on that list that you'd be uncomfortable being reflected in our financial plan for the next five years, please let us know and we'll withdraw that from future year. And, or if on 7A-6, there's any special projects that you have concern about deflecting in our financial plan, please let us know. We're just trying to touch in and make sure we're not putting something out there that you're really dead against or, or not comfortable with. Again, recognizing we will revisit the 2018 to 2022 financial plan next year again. So council's relatively comfortable with the listings we're showing right now, we can move on. Otherwise, if there's anything you'd like us to take off those lists for future year representation, just let us know.
Yes.
Could we talk about the Recreation Services Volunteer Program, Courtney?
Um, I think you said that.
I, I don't even remember that being on any discussion so far. Do we really have that many policies?
Great, thanks. Which number was that?
SPR.
That's 2018, it's $50,000, so it's SPR 38.
Yeah, we haven't had a conversation with that, so, Derek, he's there. Linda? Put the words out in our notes.
Okay.
The plan checker, didn't we hire him in 2016?
Mayor Heinzman, we hired a plan checker based on a, a contract service. So this year we're, um, where is it here?
7A-3.
Oh, yeah, so the plan checker this year becomes a service level increase because last year it was a special project or one year's. So we're essentially making it an indefinite position and we want to make sure that when we bring that budget towards, for council, that you understand you're hiring people.
Okay, so that's why it doesn't show an increase necessarily in the percentage, but it is an increase and you have to be...
That's right.
Yes.
On the marine strategy, it says phase one, but I think we're in phase two.
That is entitled.
But, no, we're in phase one, I thought we did a phase one.
Well, it says, it says piece.
It's the first part of this.
Which, which page are you on, please, council? On 7A-6?
Anyway, uh, on the marine strategy, I was hoping we'd have that done by the time I was out here. We can't forget that down. And it's gone all the way to 2019. It's a priority kind of thing, let's just get it done.
The other one that's sitting here in 2018, this is on 7A-6, is Brennan Park Arena of Legion heaters. And so I, we talked about this earlier about making sure that any upgrades to Brennan Park Cool and Side was a plan for how we want to expand that area so that we're not spending money that a few years later we're going to take apart. So that was the only one that sort of stands out and makes me a little bit nervous.
We can remove that for now and we may discuss it next year.
I actually emailed both Camilla and Tim about this this morning. I know that we bumped it this year from this year to next year. There is an issue with something's leaking. Yeah, in the, in here, so it may be a safety thing. And I'm just waiting to get confirmation back.
The point council is trying to make is that all the upgrades at Brennan Park go through the lens of looking at the future.
With any more chance on some of these things, I think we'll go through the rest here. Anybody else, any other key concerns?
And again, we will revisit this obviously going into next year, but we just want to make sure we're not reflecting something that you're like, huh? Didn't know that was even reflecting in a future year.
We, uh, we have a capital fund of five years that we...
We do, yes.
Yeah, that's at the, on the top of the package provided. The first sheet is just the utilities capital plan and then the following two sheets are the general capital plan.
And this is where it would be very helpful if you'd weigh in a bit more because of course, the more opportunity we have to get in front of the capital projects to start to tender and make sure borrowing is in place earlier, the better. So if there's something you're really worried about, this, it would be good for us to remove it so that it's not, you know, we're not queuing up and looking to tender it and, you know, putting some energies into dealing with it early next year. So those are these 4-1 and 6-1 to 3, to 3.
Thanks, I'm just wondering, you know, we talk about mitigation a lot in our budget, greenhouse gas mitigation. And I'm wondering how we, and this, this may be a committee discussion, but understanding the difference between mitigation and adaptation. We had previously, I can't remember, this year or last year, discussed and staff were working with Ian Pickets from West University to understand adaptation. And I think really our money, if we want to put our money, put our money where it goes was we'd be looking at adaptation, not mitigation in this region. So, uh, I'm not sure we understand the difference in our budget items between adaptation and mitigation. Like Ted's would be adaptation, greenhouse gas reduction would be mitigation. So I don't think we've had, I'm not sure how it affects the budget and I know we constantly look at those things as far as adaptation, wait, can I finish?
Yeah.
And, uh, but I, we had been working with Ian Pickets, he was supposed to present to council. I'm wondering how that's going and if that, if any of that affects our budget or if we can put it on the committee, uh, put it on, put it in the committee somewhere for discussion and have maybe Ian come and speak to that. Because I, I'm just worried we, we constantly have little bits about mitigating and...
Okay, you said three things. Linda, there was a discussion prior to the CIO with Ian Pickets about targeting mitigation and adaptation and I'm so, I'm wondering if that work is still going on with staff or not.
Um, Mr. Buckskin, Buckston? Put your hand up, can I?
That's scary. We have, uh, as part of the OCP process, we did prepare a report that Ian Pickets did rip. Did we share that with council?
I don't think you...
Okay, well, first things first is we'll get that to you. So some of that's being incorporated into the OCP policy. Where you're going to see that is in wildfire hazard management plans, integrated stormwater management plans. I'm not sure that there's anything that's a, um, an adaptation strategy per se, but you're going to see it and we're aware of that with stormwater. We're getting more frequent intense events, we need to redesign our stormwater systems and standards. The wildfire management plan will presumably address the same issues. So I think it's, we're aware of it as staff members. So we're looking at adaptation strategies through, and there'll be others as well, so we're aware of it.
Maybe we didn't know already, but maybe we could get that reported.
Yeah, I will get that to you this afternoon.
Uh, anybody else?
Just on the drop-in center siding for a 2020, $65,000, I'm hoping that would be redundant for that point. Figure out something to do with that building or replace it or move it or whatever, but...
We essentially build financial plans based on what mechanisms we have now. So yes, absolutely, before 2020, I hope we'll be reviewing where that building's at. Okay. Are we good? All right. So just, yeah, just keep on, all right, we're wrapping up. So, um, we just want to remind you that we're going to, we're in the year-end process, we're going to carry forward any projects that will have no net impact on the tax. It's just basically carrying on a project that started and was approved last year. We'll move it into the, um, financial plan bylaw. With council's permission, we would or we did schedule to bring the financial plan bylaw forward for three readings on the 21st. Right now, as of today, or after today, we've heard that we're going to explore the wifi at Brennan Park a little bit more. I'm not sure if you have sort of a rough level of where you'd be comfortable. We can bring that back with the bylaws, we're, as we're presenting the bylaw, but if it's under a certain value, oh, maybe this author has more information on it.
Mr. Cordell thought he might have another meeting by 2:00.
The other thing is the handheld shower, we'll go and explore how expensive that is. If it's with, is, if it's moderate, we'll put that forward with the bylaw to review with you. And then, um, the add, we're adding the children's program contingent, obviously, on funding, but we would be putting that in the budget to deal with that. Uh, we heard that we want to engage the business community potentially as we go out and talk about tax rates. So we'll look at how we communicate or work around the tax rate scenario. And, um, uh, we'll bring back the public art policy discussion to a future after Mayor Heinzman's had an opportunity to talk to the Public Art Committee. I'm hoping I've captured everything in that thought process and I guess at this point, okay.
So at this point, we're, we're going to leave the contribution of public art there, but we're also going to facilitate the spending of money to the project?
Correct, we're going to put 50,000 in and then...
And, um, and then we'll revise the policy in the future.
That would be great. Yes, thank you.
Mayor Heinzman, thank you. One oversight in the service level increases for future years. We heard from council and we recommend putting in RCMP increase in members. Four discussions in advance of Inspector Chance coming forward with the resourcing strategy, but also recognizing growth in the community and with fiber energy. So more of a place marker for discussion, but that doesn't reflect in the budget right now.
Then it won't impact this year?
It won't impact this year, no.
Now, when does the RCMP come next to, like, their, when is Inspector Chance expected to come?
We're currently scheduling and I'm not sure, Mr. Sim, if you have a date?
We're wanting to have some discussion with yourself, Mayor Heinzman, and Linda to look at potentially a, a date in early March for a special committee of the whole where Inspector Chance will come and talk about the strategic plan for Squamish and build that with some community partners. As far as looking at resourcing, that will, um, more likely be in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I think that has us, if council's comfortable with us bringing forward for three readings. I think we're...
No more hiccups, going from trip to stuff?
Unfortunately, like any budget, right? It's, it fluctuates all, all year, we are presented with new challenges at some point, we do.
So just for clarity, we can do three readings now, we would adopt it? Or would we wait until we have the final rule and all that?
So we would normally do, what, what, when we proposed doing this earlier, and as you'll remember, last year we did the same thing. We adopt the financial plan in March finally. And then when the, the rule comes through, we'll talk to council about how taxes are distributed amongst classes and how that shakes down. So essentially, we're looking for you to be comfortable with your financial plan now. And we'd be looking to pass the financial plan now. Then we can talk further about distribution of taxes.
So that means everyone's got to be comfortable with the revenue request?
When we bring back the bylaw, we can talk to you a little bit more about BC averages, how our ratios are sitting against those currently. And if that's helpful, we can certainly bring that back when we bring back the financial plan bylaw. But again, we won't have the revised, revised rule until. But we can certainly do some of those things based on completed rule, give you a complexion of it. If you really have huge concerns at that point, then we can...
And the revenue increase is about 6.5 and the tax potential average is 4.5?
The tax rate increase that we'd be applying to the various classes at this point, we're estimating at 4.5.
The revenue increase is 6.5.
The revenue increase is 6.5, the taxable increase is 4.5. That's because we have X amount of...
We have some new properties that would be sharing now.
So is this a tax issue?
What's the double band?
All that more tax coming in, we get to spread it out over more of our taxes, so it's only a 4.5, like...
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, you always say that.
Well, that's the way 4.5 is used, like, ah, it's not...
You know what, this is not about personal issues, so please don't make it that.
My reason, my question is that last year we got to sort of the 11th hour and then we didn't have all of council vote for the budget. And so I just want to make sure that people are comfortable. And if not, then let's have another meeting and figure out whether we need to reduce the ask because I'd rather have that debate and another one of that debate before, you know... For me, I feel like the budget, and I know this doesn't have to happen, but it, it feels better when it's unanimous, that we all support what we're asking for from the community. And if people aren't there yet, then I'm not sure that I want to say that February 21st is the day to vote on first reading if people need some time to reflect and think about whether they want that ask to be lower.
I agree with that and I think really understanding, you know, 4.5 a residence is...
4.5 is not a residence.
4.5 is a multiplier that we base our tax rate on and that is all of it, exactly. So, but it's not 4.5 for, for businesses. It's, uh, there's a multiplier in there and that, you know, understanding what the tax rates are going to be and laying that out before I vote on it, I would like some time for reflection because 4.5, as Ted said, is difficult. It may seem hot, you know, the average, I'd like to know what the average in BC is. I'd like to know, I need more number, comparative numbers before I want to ask our community and agree on 4.5.
So Mayor Heinzman, I will bring back, based on the completed rule, that information. Again, recognizing the revised rule can change. But if that's sufficient, we'll bring that back with the bylaw so that you're making a decision with some of that information, if that's helpful.
Thank you. And, and it could mean a reduction in the percentage increase for businesses depending on what the ratio... Yeah, but as Christine outlined earlier, legislatively, we have to do this process before we actually determine the rates for various classes.
So, and again, a lot, you know, a lot of municipalities do do this late, they do it in May. I, my understanding was it was a council philosophy that we wanted to do these things earlier. We wanted to not use up the...
Okay, let me clarify that, because I think we want to get it to like 95% early so we can release funds early and, and projects that we really know we're going to do, we can get early. In terms of actual approval of the bylaw, I don't think that matters as much as long as we've done 98% of the work leading up to here. I mean, we don't necessarily have to approve the bylaw next week.
So if I may, we basically do. The early release is always uncomfortable for me. If it's not sitting in the 2016 to 2020 bylaw and, you know, then technically, we are operating outside the law. It is supposed to be in the, an adopted financial plan bylaw for us to do the expenditures. So I, you know, again, we wiggle room, we kind of go, okay, well, if you want to do this project, then we could look at another operating project if that's not the way the bylaw went. But really, it is that bylaw that directs whether we can or can't spend and tender and borrow.
So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, a number of municipalities sometimes do a provisionalary bylaw. Work off that provisionalary bylaw and then they might find... Work off that provisionalary bylaw and then they might find the bylaw in April.
But they do pass the bylaw.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. So, but maybe that's the way we articulate it. It's a, it's a provisionalary bylaw, so we can make sure we're legitimizing our really decisions. We may revise that bylaw before we actually determine the tax rate.
And amending the bylaw is an option in April. So if we get there and, and we need to amend the bylaw, that is an option. I would like to put it out as the bylaw and then we can go as an amendment would be ideal.
Okay. Does everyone understand that?
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, and I think there's two decisions, at least for me, there's two decisions here. And one is, um, on the requisition, the amount we intend to spend to deliver services to the community as a whole. Uh, and I think that's what you're talking about is the financial plan. The second decision, um, which is related, but not necessarily tied to, is how we share that among the different classes. Because if we, for example, when all of this unfolded, found that business taxes were going up more than we are comfortable with, the solution, from my perspective, is not to come back and reduce the amount of money we're going to spend. You don't say, oh, sorry, we're gonna have to lay off two firefighters or something like that because business can't afford it. That's not the way we operate. The, the result of that, excuse me, is you reallocate the sharing of the load. So you're changing the mil rate, but you're not going back and changing the requisition because it just doesn't work that way.
I mean, theoretically, you could if you could be adding to.
But it has absolutely no effect. I, I mean, to, 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 especially in our case, where business is a relatively small percentage of our, of our tax base as a whole, to do something that would just benefit the business community by reducing the expenditures, would take a significant reduction in expenditures to have any impact on, it would also reduce the taxes for the residential and industrial. So you really don't do it that way.
Yeah.
That's not the way you do it. You figure out how much you want to spend and all these things are, are valid expenses and you satisfy yourself with that. And then the second thing is then we'll decide how we're gonna share it amongst the taxpayers of the community.
And that's what we do when we do the tax.
That's why I think we can talk about the financial plan sooner rather than later because what we've been talking about up till now is how much money we want to spend for different services for our community as a whole. If we're happy with that, then we can move on, we can have the second discussion. But the second discussion really shouldn't impact the first discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, well, on the first discussion, I mean, it's easy to spend money because, you know, when all the volunteer groups come in and ask for their money, I have no problem with all of that. You guys are really worth it. I mean, we take the 6,000, we give you, we give us 20,000, you know. I have no problem spending the money, but where I run into a little bit of a problem is, you know, I, I also anticipated more money coming in because we've got a growing community, so there's all those new houses that are coming in. We don't have that SOBC that we're paying the interest on the big loan and, you know, so, so I was kind of thinking we were gonna come in and then the next year, to Karen's point, it's nice to have everyone agree. I mean, I liked it when we had that one year where we did, we wanted 0% tax increase. And then staff came back with, hey, we get a 0%. You know, I agree that there's not anything that we've spent money on that isn't worthwhile. But I'm gonna certainly come in with my tax increases this year to let everybody know how much my taxes were important. And I, I can afford taxes. There's a lot of people, I mean, there's people moving out of town because they can't pay for taxes. So I, so I, and I know I'm not the best tax guy. This money to me is numbers that I see and deal with. And I think the taxes at the district is so abstract. But I, I mean, I do have a hard, hard time with it, you know. But I was kind of hoping we were gonna be, you know, pretty low this year because there's so much new stuff coming in and we sold a bunch of stuff. So next year, I'm gonna be hoping that we aim for a 0% or close to, just to see, you know.
Yeah, actually, that year, we actually said minus four.
Yeah.
We ended up at plus six or something, but we said minus four, but staff had brought half the time.
Yeah, well, you were in that year.
Thanks, and I won't belabor that point, but I think that the, it's really difficult when you're in a year of transition of the, uh, actual demographic. So you have a lot of people moving in that can afford because they bought into that price increase. You have the majority of the community that didn't buy into that price increase, like bought a long time ago, they've been living here a long time. And when you say 4.5% increase and they've had a huge increase on their assessment, it's gonna drive people out of town. So you have to be mine, and, and I agree with Doug that there are two different decisions there and I accept that fully, but, you know, I'd like a little bit of time. We've, we've even adjusted the budget today. So I'd like to sit on those, even just a week or two different council meetings before we adopt, so that I can sit on those things and really reflect. Are those values that the community has, if you would put this to people, they couldn't afford their taxes, would they say, you know, I want gravel in that parking lot, I want, you know, I really want these small incremental changes that actually add up an extra point in tax increases? I was sort of expecting with the amount of money coming in to be around 3% or 4%. And I, I am, I, I don't mind 4.5, but I also wonder, like, is it possible to get down an extra percent if we really drill down on it? We did it the other day. We found a $110,000 to, to rebuild the parking lot and cut parts and services for it. So, you know, are there other things that we could cut out to get to that, to, you know, to get to 3%? If we set 3% as a goal? I just, but I, I, you know, I don't know. So I'd like to actually comb through the budget now that we have everything in it, have a finalized budget and be able to go through it and say, and be comfortable with 4.5 is the community's demands. And then look at the ratios and analysis.
Sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've had lots and lots of meetings where we have voted to put things in the budget and to take things out of the budget. And so I'm comfortable with, with what's in here now, but that doesn't mean that everyone is. And so, you know, do people want another chance to go through the column that says fund from operating, which is our taxation column, um, to make any suggestions? So for me, I'm not going to make any suggestions. I'm comfortable with that's in here now. But do we want to give all of council an opportunity just to go through and, so that they can sleep at night and say, and get, they can sit down with this page with community members and say, what would you take out if you wanted it to be lower? And that's, you know, do we give a little bit of time for that to happen? So rather than doing the first three readings on the 21st, we do them two weeks after that. And that gives council a chance to go up to the community, talk, make some suggestions to staff if they cut anything more. I don't know. And, and I just, I would, I would like for there to be consensus when we're voting on this and maybe that's impossible, but, uh, you know, we go through these numbers pretty quickly and maybe some people want to take a little extra time to be sure.
Well, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why I want to make sure we're doing this early is so that we have the time to, we don't feel pressured to make a decision that we're not comfortable with yet. But I think, one thing to keep in mind with the budget is it, it's a consensus document. And we could probably come in here, each of us, with our individual priorities and individual sensibilities and come up with a much leaner budget. But this is, uh, a process of give and take and there's always gonna be a certain amount of, majority of people in council, the feedback from the community on, yes, this stays in or yes, this goes out. So if we were all to do our own budget, we'd probably all come in under zero, right? But because we're all taking into account various aspects of the community, various aspects of council's, uh, individual, um, aspirations, it ends up being a consensus document and that's reflective of the community. So, um, we're currently at a 4.5 effective increase based on the current rule that's we're doing, but not the final rule. And we don't know where that final rule usually, I mean, it's the question Christine, that final rule, is it usually go up or down?
Normally, if anything, it'll go a little bit down just because of the, although appeals take a while to get through. So generally, it's fairly close. Like I say, this was a bit of an unusual year for us to have an amendment that we do. And again, if I can just reiterate, we're talking about, we talk about this every year and I'm gonna drill it home again. 4.5% is the amount of increase I'm applying to all the rates. How that affects each property, you will never properly predict. Even if I tell you what the average household is, you're gonna have a neighbor who says, oh my God, my taxes went up 60%, and one that said, hey, my taxes didn't go up this year. I just can't stress that enough. It is, it's a.
I talked to my wife.
Interesting game.
They always go up.
But they, they, I remember my first year, my property taxes went up 49%. There was another counselor on council that went down 12% in the same year. So that, that is just what happens on an individual basis. Okay, so unless I see council, I think, I think it's fair to give council a time to reflect and not just bring it back next week. So first meeting in, uh.
Yeah, March.
March.
We may need to do some early releases next meeting then for one or two items.
Sure.
We have employment contracts running out and a few things like that. We don't want to lose good people, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So how's it left then? If, if counselors did have comments or suggestions or wanted to question something, are we gonna put time aside for that next week or the week after? Cause we have, what, 21st and 28th before the actual bylaw. I don't think this is a discussion we want to have the night of the bylaw.
So I, I think, if I may, I'll suggest something to council for comment. Maybe what we'll do is we'll give council this week to make comments. If there are some big ideas out there and someone comes back and says, I've got an idea to cut $300,000 or at $300,000, um, we'll maybe give it till the end of the week to do that. And should we, if they're, all of a sudden, council comes back with those cuts, we can have a meeting in either the 21st or the 28th, depending on when. But I want to sort of set a bit of cutoff. We can't just go till the 7th of March and then all of a sudden go, oh, yeah. Okay, so if we give council a week to do that and then, um, um, maybe we'll have time on the 28th to find why we need to make any adjustments.
Or just to bake them.
No, I'm not gonna.
Oh, then we'll make all the cuts then.
Yeah.
Mayor salary.
Don't get big, so we'll get ready for.
Just on public comments as well, if we can also, you know, just make a fine, make the public aware that the final cutoff for public input as well. And then, because I don't think the public is aware that we're voting in the budget. And they, I'm sure they're aware that we're voting on the budget that.
Okay, great. Do you need, any resolution to that affect or?
No, I, we'll just preface, so my understanding is we're gonna, if you let everyone go, we might do another committee of the whole, some type on the 28th if needed.
If needed, but you have to really communicate.
Yeah. And otherwise, we'll bring the bylaw back for the first meeting in March. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we're good for budget, so we can recess for a minute. We're in the committee of the whole meeting, uh, Tuesday, February 14th. And, um, we're meeting on the traditional territory of this conversation. And up next is 4.1, RBC Transit Expansion Discussion.
Great, thank you. Um, back to the first, Sustainability Coordinator with District of Squamish. Today, we have three representatives from BC Transit with us. We have Matt Boyd, Planning Manager, Levi Meganbear, our planning, sounds like a planner, sorry, and Lisa Trotter, who's our new Regional Transit Manager. They will be discussing our upcoming transit expansions with our nearest expansion in September of 2017, um, our fare review, um, and project update for the CSG corridor study, some results and next steps. I'll pass it over to Lisa.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to be here and it's a pleasure to meet everyone today. I'm Lisa Trotter, new to this area of transit, although not new to BC Transit. So I'm the Senior Regional Transit Manager for BC Transit. And I'm just gonna highlight some outlines and some high-level recommendations to give you an idea of what we're gonna talk about it today. And then I'm gonna pass things over to Levi to talk about your upcoming expansion. So the outline for today will be the upcoming expansion for September 2017 and future expansions that we have earmarked for between 2018 and 2020. And there will be opportunities to revisit those in the coming months. We're also gonna discuss potential fare review options and the C to Sky Corridor Study Project Update. Our recommendations will be to receive the attached letter report, 2017 Letter Report for Information or Provide Comment, to approve the District of Squamish staff to work with BC Transit to implement the September 2017 expansions, and to approve the District of Squamish staff to work with BC Transit to restructure transit fares to align with the 2017 service expansions. So I'll pass things over to Levi to go over some of the planning for the upcoming expansion.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks again for having us here. So I'm gonna touch base on the September 2017 expansion and then a little bit on the future expansions from 2018 to 2020. So just to take a moment to take a step back, so these expansions, both the ones that are coming up for 2017 in September and then the ones further, came out of the Transit Future Plan process, uh, which was a pretty comprehensive process. It involved a lot of public, uh, engagement and feedback. And, uh, so these expansions that we're looking at and we're gonna be bringing forward today were priorities that came from the public, that came through that process. So just wanted to put it into, into that context. So the first expansion for September 2017 is, uh, looking to increase the service frequency on your core transit network all day. Uh, so as a result of this expansion, we're hoping to improve your service frequency to a minimum of 20-minute service frequency on the core network, which is between your downtown Squamish and your Garibaldi Village, also hitting the Brennan Park Recreation Center there as well. And, uh, you're kind of looking at around 2,300 service hours for that expansion and roughly 169, 170,000 dollars for local cost annually. And the second expansion that was prioritized, uh, for September is to increase your Sunday and holiday transit service, because currently you have about four to five trips on each of your routes in your system on Sunday currently, which is a substantial reduction in your level of service in comparison to, say, your weekday service or even your Saturday service, where you're operating an average of 15 trips, uh, on each route every day. So with this proposed expansion, you'd be increasing your service on, uh, your routes one, two, and three to sort of 10 to 11 trips. So bringing it a little bit closer to your Saturday level of service and just make it easier for your community to get around on, on Sundays and holidays. And so in terms of the implementation plan moving forward for this September expansion, uh, we'd be looking to start this around September 5th. And, uh, we, as BC Transit, would look to collaborate with the District of Squamish and also with the local operating company to develop the service details and schedules and, and to go from there. Uh, and so in terms of future expansion options, moving forward beyond September 2017, um, those September 2017 expansions were signed off sort of in May 2016 through your three-year Transit Expansion Plan. And so we revisit this process every year. And so very quickly, we're gonna be coming up to the, uh, the three-year Transit Expansion Plan for this year. And so you'll have a chance to revisit some of these expansion options. But the ones listed here were the ones that were agreed upon within principle in the, uh, the May 2016 process. Uh, and you'll notice that for 2018, 19, currently, there's, uh, expansions earmarked for improving your local handy dart service, uh, introducing seasonal service to your Squamish parks in the south, uh, to increase your core transit network to improve access to Quest University as well. And then also to provide that interregional connector service between Squamish and Metro Vancouver, uh, which Matt will touch base on a little more moving forward. And then for 2019, 20, just some additional expansion resources set aside to potentially improve any interregional connector service, uh, moving forward. And so with that, I'll pass it back to Lisa to speak to the fare review.
So when we're talking about doing expansion in a community, it's just a really good time to also look at whether there is any want to look at your fare structure. So we've put together a few options just to, for mayor and council to take a look and see if there is any want to report on that. It aligns really well if there is a decision to do that when we're producing new rider's guides and reprinting schedules to, to combine it all at the same time. So one of the reasons that we do like to look at the fare reviews, um, every few years is because there are things that we find that have been problematic and we want to make them easier for the end user, for the consumers, and sometimes for the operators. So our review goals are to simplify and make it an easy-to-understand fare structure. So in a lot of communities, we're looking at discount fares such as seniors or. So in a lot of communities, we're looking at discount fares such as seniors or youth, or where there's transfers, any areas where there might be conflict with an operator where they have to kind of figure out whether this is a senior or whether it's a youth, to try and take that out of the equation. To maximize revenue and ridership is always a goal, and to make it more compatible with future fare technologies. So as we move to CCTV on buses, and we move to new fare structures on smart buses in the future, you know, there might be a time when someone's putting on a phone and being able to scan their fare. So we try to align those things to make it simpler right now and make it better for the future. So those are some of the end goals. Some potential fare options, you can see that we've got your current fare structure there with the adult at one seventy-five, senior at one fifty, and student at one twenty-five when we look at cash fare. On the far corner, we have the peer average. So for similar systems, the peer average is two dollars for the fare. And in a lot of our communities, we have streamlined it to just one set fare, removing the senior and the student fare of the equation. The few options that we have there, we've got option one, where we're leaving the fare at the one seventy-five, option two, where it goes up to two dollars, option three is also at two dollars. Now, one of the things that we have done, if you, you take note, if you look further down to the monthly passes and the tickets, they still, in option one and two, maintain a cheaper fare. So anything that is increased to the student and the senior could be offset by switching over to like a monthly pass or using tickets, so that it doesn't impact them as much on the cost. So again, these are just options that we've laid out, but anywhere where we can simplify it for the operator, it causes less conflict when they have to decide someone's age, and it simplifies the amount of fare products we have to carry, which also reduces costs. And we have also found that when we simplify things like going from one seventy-five to two dollars, although you might think, well gee, that's a fare increase, that's inconvenient to the end user, we found the reality is that often people have a tunny in their pocket, and a dollar seventy-five is more difficult sometimes for people to navigate, so sometimes they're putting a tunny in anyway. And in terms of revenue and ridership, in most cases, when we've gone up to the two dollars from one seventy-five, we have seen an increase in both revenue and ridership. So these are just for your consideration, and they are attached in the letter report with some more detail as well.
Great, thanks, Lisa. So now, switching gears again to the corridor study, I should mention we'll have, open it to questions after the end of this section. If you guys have any questions, I'm sure you guys do with regards to the fares, because it always generates great discussion. So just to note, we're gonna give a quick overview on Cedar Sky Corridor Project, which I'm sure you guys are somewhat up to speed on. I just wanna note that we're gonna be doing this presentation to SLRD tomorrow, and then Whistler next Tuesday, and then Pemberton next Wednesday. So Squamish, you guys are getting the first run at this, so hopefully it goes okay with regards to the update. So just, we'll give a quick background consultation overview, which we've done extensively to date, future engagement that we're planning in the very near future, and then next steps moving forward with regards to how you guys can become involved. So as Levi alluded to, the Transit Future Plan, so I think the Transit Future Plan, if we were to define, you know, transit decisions as Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the Transit Future Plan essentially is that base level, right? So once we've established that, and get an understanding of what the communities want, then we can start building up towards that implementation, which is sort of at the top. So as part of the Transit Future Plan, we really focused on interregional service. So that came up quite a bit with regards to discussion, simply because a lot of people are making those connections between communities. And within our own BC Transit strategic plan, we identified that, you know, our lifestyles and communities are increasingly regional. People are no longer staying within their own centers anymore, they're using that multi-caz in regions, particularly with an area like Squamish where you're bordering, you know, a major metropolitan city, as well as a major recreational destination with regards to lots of employment. And that works the other way around, too, there's lots of people in Metro Vancouver and Whistler that are actually now destined for Squamish as well. So building on those interregional connections is an important part of transit planning moving forward. So as part of that Transit Future Plan, the key things that we recommended was to, one, do a more in-depth review of the Cedar Sky Corridor itself, which is the process that we're doing right now, which we kicked off last summer. And the other piece was to also look at the development of the Cedar Sky Regional Governance Structure. So in order for this regional and interregional service to work, it has to have an effective governance structure that's based on sustainable funding, right? So learning from the experiences in the past with regards to interregional service, and also looking at the best practices around the province, it's critical that, you know, a sustainable governance and funding model is set up to make any of this service sustainable and be successful for the customer. So that's a big component of the project. We don't have all the answers right now, it's still in the, largely the discussion phase, but we certainly look forward to having those conversations in more detail in the coming months, particularly as we start to scope out how the service is gonna look. As Levi mentioned, as part of your three-year Expansion Plan, Squamish did approve in principle to introduce interregional service between Squamish and Metro Bank starting in eighteen nineteen. So hopefully, once we complete this report, which will be in the next couple of months, you'll be able to use that report to make your decision with regards to what service are you interested, are you interested in pursuing it further, and what does it, what does it look like? So continuing on here is that, just the history of the Cedar Sky Regional and interregional service, that there is some existing service today, so there's the Route ninety-nine commuter that goes all the way from Pemberton to Whistler, so that operates on two round trips per day, and it's quite a productive service, lots of, particularly for commuters. In two thousand and five, there was the Squamish-Whistler commuter that was introduced, and it was, I think it went through, it was quite successful for a period there, and then, you know, due to some challenges and, you know, changes in economic conditions, the service was discontinued in two thousand and eleven. So we're sort of revisiting that service now between Squamish, Whistler, and Metro Bank. And I think it's very important that we reflect back on what worked when we did it last time and what didn't work, so that we can learn from those experiences. So if we do this again, let's make sure we're building a system that is sustainable, it's not built on a house of cards, it's built with a solid foundation, so it's consistently there, particularly for the customer, what we're all here trying to design a system for. So with regards to this project itself, as I mentioned, we kicked off in summer of two thousand and sixteen, and we do have a project working group, and we've been meeting quite regularly, almost at least once a month. And the project working group consists of BC Transit, as well as all of the existing contributing partners in the Cedar Sky, so that includes Squamish, Whistler, and Pemberton, as well as the currently non-contributing partners to BC Transit, Lilwat Nation, SLRD, and Squamish Nation. We also have Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure in there, they've been providing some great discussion and feedback with regards to governance and funding-type discussions for best practices. TransLink is also involved, sort of at a discussion point right now, where we have a constant channel with them, because any service that would be extended into Metro Vancouver, there is the South Coast Transportation Act that they have with regards to TransLink being the only provider of transit within that region. So we've been working with them to see potential solutions and how we can connect these two sort of regions with a unified transit system that benefits, obviously, the customer, because the last thing we want is for the bus to cross the border, and suddenly we make everybody pay an extra fare or something like that. We want this system to be successful, and for it to be successful, we want to sort of minimize transfers at best. And then also, we've had additional stakeholders along the way, so whether that be private industry, or other people that want to be involved with the project, they're always invited to participate in the working group meetings. So the project objectives of what we've been doing is to complete a high-level market analysis for potential transit, which essentially is, let's build a business case, you know? Who's gonna be using this? How many people are gonna be riding it? What's the benefit for the community? And then based on that, we're also gonna identify the, you know, detailed costs, how the schedule's gonna look, what are the fares gonna look like? And then finally, to develop and explore possible governance structures and funding with regards to this service. How are we gonna make this a sustainable part of the community and the region? So what we've done, so we did the kickoff, and the first step was public engagement phase one. So we did an online survey, and we sent it out to the public, and we were cautiously optimistic that people would be interested, and it turned out that we got about twenty-seven hundred responses to this online survey, which, to put in perspective, there's other major cities that have had online surveys that barely get, you know, fifteen hundred people participating. So there was an overwhelming amount of participation with the survey, which is great, because it means that we have a deep pool of information with regards to the service. And Squamish in particular, you can see, as far as participation, Squamish had twelve-hundred-and-sixty people themselves, so they led the way with regards to participation. So, so a pat on the back certainly to District of Squamish Staff, as well as Mayor and Council for communicating those messages via your social media channels and all of our opportunities. So this was, was a great success story with regards to participation. It's just some highlights of the survey, so age demographics, so we've got a really, you know, uniform sort of age demographic, sort of demonstrating that, you know, whether you're a senior citizen or a young person, you are participating in that survey. So that, that graph is very reflective to how the age demographics of the population work in the region. So that's a great sign that it means that we've got a really good sample with regards to the different range of ages in the region. With regards to the Squamish-specific results, so we asked, you know, a simple question, do you have regular access to a personal vehicle? So not surprisingly, over eighty percent said yes for Squamish. We asked commute modes, what's your most common commute? And you can see likewise during the winter and the summer, you got about sixty-five percent are driving alone in their vehicle. And then you can see public transit is about, you know, five percent during the winter and four point five percent during the summertime. I think the other fluctuation that's worth noting is just bicycles. So bicycle, you have zero point five percent in the winter, whereas summer, you have three point four percent. So what we found is usually people will ride their bikes in the summertime and actually use transit during the wintertime. So that's one of those highlights of things that we've been looking to potentially change with regards to the introduction of transit service. Most common and second-most common destinations along the corridor, so, you know, a key question when people are traveling, you know, along through the region, and not surprisingly from Squamish, you've got, so the blue line is the most common destination, the red line being the second-most common destination. So you can see the blue line is dominated by City Vancouver, North Vancouver, West Vancouver, and Whistler. And then likewise, the red line also sort of mimics that. So I think there's a huge population of Squamish residents that are, you know, accessing services and opportunities in Metro Vancouver, as well as Whistler. And I should note, too, that these are only the Squamish results, so in the full results, when we asked Whistlerites that question, a lot of them were actually coming to Squamish, right, to do a lot of their shopping and purchasing and medical services. So this is only the snapshot of Squamish, but if you looked at the other areas, you see a lot of people actually coming in.
Do you have Whistler and Pemberton's results that you can show us?
Unfortunately, we don't have here, we have them in the document itself, maybe through staff, we can send you those graphs. So the Squamish results in more detail, so most common destination, the majority were work-related, so fifty percent of people are using the corridor to go to work, and they make this trip daily, forty percent, primarily during the AM and PM on weekdays, that would reflect common work times, and thirty-nine percent are traveling alone, so those are single- or community vehicles, are traveling alone on the corridor. As far as second-most common date, second-most common destination, not surprisingly, social recreation or entertainment. So people using the corridor to, you know, go have fun on the weekend or do something during the evening. And most of these people make this trip a couple of times per month, as opposed to every day for the workers. With regards to key stop locations, not surprisingly Downtown Vancouver stood out as a popular destination, particularly because once you get to downtown Vancouver, you can really sort of branch out to anywhere else within Metro Bank. Park Royal, Park Royal also stood out, and then Whistler Village, obviously, was the key stop for Whistler. For Squamish, very interesting, when we asked what the most common stop was, Garibaldi Village actually sort of outpaced downtown.
The liquor store.
What's that?
It's the liquor store.
The liquor store.
It is.
We'll have to add that to the slide. And I think as Beth mentioned, part of the reason to that is that the way that Squamish is designed is that your downtown is actually right at the bottom of your community, whereas Garibaldi is your central sort of hub area, which is an interesting discussion, I'm sure you're having that as part of your OCP process as well, with regards to where do you centralize transit itself. So it's just something to keep in mind, sort of at a higher level in the days moving forward, and then obviously Pemberton, downtown Pemberton was the key stop there. So as far as next steps, so we've got some public engagement coming up from March second to March fourth. We're gonna do six events, or is it five? Six, I think. Six events total. So we're going to Whistler on March second in the evening on Thursday, and I should note that we have that detailed information, we'll send it to everybody perhaps in the next day or two. Is it, and so Whistler is gonna be on Thursday, March the second in the evening, and then we're going to the next day Britannia Beach in the morning on Friday, and Squamish Nation in the afternoon, and then Britannia Centre at Squamish on the evening of Friday, March third, from five until eight. So I'd certainly encourage all, Mayor and Council.
Brennan Park.
Brennan Park, yep, to, for Mayor and Council to attend and get involved in that. So BC Transit will be there, and District of Squamish Staff will be there as well, and I think it'll be a great opportunity to just continue the discussion and keep it going with regards to the public. And then the next day, we're going to Lilwat Nation and then Pemberton as well. And keeping in mind that all this information will be online as well, so if someone's not able to attend in person, then they can visit online. Particularly, we've had some interest in Metro Vancouver, they wanna know how they can participate, so we've just forwarded that information. And then the topics that we're gonna be discussing in the engagement is that we're gonna present the consultation results, and we wanna ask the public, are these, do these results match what you think? Are these correct? We're gonna talk about the bus stop locations and routing, so where are the stops along the way that we wanna have the service? We're gonna talk about the fare options, but from a very, very high level with regards to what do you think, what do you think a fare fare would be? We're gonna talk about scheduled times and also mobility integration, so how does the Cedar Sky Regional Transit Service work together in a system with the other existing transportation options on the corridor, whether it be from private or from personal usage, or from cycling, or just different modes? And then, so some of the proposed bus stops, we'll be sharing at the consultation, downtown Squamish, Squamish Industrial Parks, or where the Walmart is, that came up as a common destination, Garibaldi Village, South Squamish Parks was a common theme, Squamish Nation, and then Brackendale and Tantil. So a lot of these are just in the conceptual mode, we don't know how the stop would be incorporated on the highway, but we just wanna get the discussion going and continue to work demo TI with regards to, with those infrastructure requirements. And then Metro Vancouver proposed stops, you have Downtown Vancouver, Park Royal Mall, and then Horseshoe Bay. Horseshoe Bay is, it's quite secure to get in and around Horseshoe Bay via the highway, so that's something that, through our analysis, I think it's a discussion we wanna engage with the public, that do you wanna have every trip, should every trip go to Horseshoe Bay, or do we just assign specific trips? Because the last thing we want is a full bus heading to Metro Vancouver and deviating down Horseshoe Bay and taking ten minutes and only dropping off one person. I feel bad for that one person, sort of feeling that stare. So we wanna design a transit system that works for the majority, or for the masses of the people that are going from one destination to another. And then, yeah, next steps, we have public engagement, and then we're continuing to work on the funding and governance options, so that discussion is just an ongoing thing that we're having with all levels of government right now, so it's local and especially provincial with regards to finding a model that works. Continue to work with stakeholders on service development, so post this engagement, we'll continue to work closely with District of Squamish Staff, who have been extremely engaged with this project, so, you know, a big thanks to them for all the support along the way. And then finally, we'll get a final report, that final document that we'll be able to share with everyone in the early spring, that will hopefully guide the decision-making process with regards to expansion over the coming months and years. So that sort of wraps it up, and sort of coming full circle with Lisa's original recommendations is that we would be looking for receiving the 2017 Letter Report with regards to the expansion, and it's approving District Squamish to work with BC Transit to implement the September expansions, and then also to work with staff, or to work with BC Transit with regards to fares. And I know that Beth has some more formal, formal recommendations that she can get to as soon as this presentation is, is our presentation's over. So again, I thank you guys very much for your time and inviting us today to give you guys an update on Squamish transit. It's always a pleasure coming to Squamish, because you guys are so engaged with your transit system and active transportation in general, so we certainly look forward to some of the, some of these cool projects that are on the horizon with you guys moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So there's sort of, your presentation is broken into three parts, so I'm hoping council maybe will deal with one part at a time, so we don't bounce the conversation all over the place. So first up, any comments or questions from council on the expansion projects later in 2017? I have one question. Currently, we're quite low on Sundays, the proposal is to go up to eleven passes on Sunday, Saturday, probably has fifteen. Is it, you know, it seems to me that if we standardize, and maybe I'm wrong, standardize the days a bit more, so people don't go, does it currently on this day or not on this day? Like, if we went up to fifteen a day, is that possible, and does that make it a little easier for riders to anticipate being able to use it?
It's a great question. I think what we've found in the past in other communities is there is a slight difference sometimes in travel demand between the Saturday and the Sunday, and in terms of that difference in travel demand, as well as the additional cost of providing a higher level of service, oftentimes we find that communities do have a different level of service between Saturday and Sunday. That being said, I mean, it's definitely something that could be looked at moving forward if you, if it was felt that that would be something that's worth pursuing, but it would, of course, have a higher cost associated.
And is it just that you're not getting later in the evening, basically, on a Sunday? Is that where the difference is?
And I think it's just a little bit, like, the frequency is probably split, it might be a little farther between trips, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to dig into that a little more and get back to about that level of detail.
So the question's on the expansion, Lisa?
On the, I'm just wondering about having family pass right now, currently is economically prohibitive to, for families.
And that's the tickets, we'll get to that. I'm trying to parse it out, so we don't go bouncing all over.
Right, bouncing all over the place. Yeah, I would have the same question, our economy is transitioning to, it's mostly tourism in the summers, and I don't know if it's, if it's something that can be done just seasonally to up the service on Saturdays and Sundays. to up the service on Saturdays and Sundays. But our, because we have more shops opening now and our economy running on Saturdays and Sundays, I would agree with the mayor in that equalizing the service would be of more benefit to us. I know that a lot of shops are now opening on Sundays to accommodate tourists and for people that are. It's when our, because you see that most people, we have a lot of people commuting to the city, that on weekends is when people need to get around town to actually do shopping and to actually make those day trips in town via transit would be much more applicable.
Great, great comment. One thing to add is that in this upcoming consultation, this is going to be happening in Squamish for the Sea to Sky Corridor Project, is we also have a slide or a board for the local Squamish expansion. And so the Sunday expansion plan will be on there. And so we'll look forward to engaging in that conversation with the local community at that point and see what their feedback is. And perhaps when we bring it back finally, we'll be able to see if that's something that the public is also really pushing for as well. So we can support this comment as well with what the community is saying.
Can we specifically ask that question? So it's not a passive way of getting their feedback? Can we actively say, what are your thoughts about expanding it to equal Saturdays? Just if the question is posed, they sometimes, people don't.
Right, think about that potential option.
So these changes, we've already, basically for this year, this is for next year. Just to be sure that this year is set.
Well, some of them are, we're talking about the expansion pieces that are already in the budget currently and it's set for eleven days on the weekend. And that starts in September, is that right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I should note that I think that, further to what Levi said, is that the leap from our existing Sunday service to the one you'll have in September is a huge leap, right? And then the next step for is to do that full equalization. But keep in mind too that your core ridership base is still during that weekday sort of midday service between Garibaldi and Squamish. So obviously, half of the resources are being used to focus on that, you know, that core ridership. And then the other half are being used to sort of build that new market demand.
So on the expansion.
Yeah, on the expansion. So on the slide, did you say that it goes to Brennan Park instead of Business Park? If it's weekday expansion, would it not make more sense to go through, like during business hours, the employment is in the Business Park? Can you go to the slide where you talked about the?
Yeah, for sure.
Because I think the core transit network goes, yeah. Yeah. The reason why we brought out Brennan Park was just because we heard through other channels that an increase in service to that particular area was something that the community was really looking for. But yeah, along the core transit network, it is also serving the industrial area.
Okay.
Once we get back to the next slide.
It would still follow the same group that the core network follows now, which would be more frequent.
Brennan Park then through the industrial.
Yeah, down along Queensway and downtown.
Thank you, that is.
Any more on the expansion pieces that are coming later in this year?
Okay, let's center down on Squamish and the industrial park.
Yeah.
So doesn't, if it goes along the back road there though, isn't it?
And all points in between, right? That's the piece.
Yeah, so you can see there.
Doesn't lie.
It ultimately turns off Queensway, heading southbound into the Walmart, Home Depot area, back onto Queensway and then into downtown. So it services that area.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let's move on to the ticketing piece. Counselor Chappell, your question on ticketing and then Counselor.
Yeah, the family pass, having a family pass. So if you're going to pay eighteen dollars to take the bus there and back, you're not going to get on the bus.
So you're looking to introduce a family pass?
Yes.
And do you have other communities in BC Transit population that have a family pass? So essentially create a pass for two, three kids and two parents every month?
I think that there's other communities, I'm not sure what the Squamish top of my head is, but there's many communities where children ride for free to a certain age. But as far as a family pass, it's not that they like a monthly pass or family passes.
No, even a day pass. If you're full family, if you're using service on Saturdays, you're going out with your kids. If I had to choose between taking my car to Garibaldi Village or paying eighteen dollars, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the car.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that there are some other communities in the province that have raised the age of children that are allowed to go on for free. And I think it's a great idea.
What's our age?
I think it's five under five.
Yeah, I was going to guess six, sorry, I don't know.
Five and under. Okay, so maybe that's something Counselor wants to discuss is actually raising that age and making it much more affordable for families to go on the bus. So let's, I think that's a great idea. So let's, let's either discuss that now or park it and we'll discuss it. Maybe a question back to you, what are the pros and cons of doing that? And how would affect revenue? And I mean, from the surface, it sounds like a great idea, like maybe move it twelve and under or ten and under or something.
We'd probably have to do a little bit more analysis to get back to you on a concrete number with the age. But ultimately, you know, I think it would be only affecting a very small proportion of the ridership if you were just changing the age from six to twelve. But we could come back with more detailed information and analysis on who's currently riding the system and get that back to you. Overall, we use the Simpson curtain rule to kind of address that if we increase ridership by ten percent, you potentially lose three percent of the ridership. But we haven't actually in fact seen that to be true in a lot of communities of your size. Usually, we find that when we up the revenue from one seventy-five to two dollars, that that doesn't really affect the ridership. In fact, it's often gone up just because it's a round number. And you'll see in these two options to try and keep the affordability, and option one and option two, we've kept the, we've frozen the monthly pass at the same rate that it currently is. So even if we did up the cash fare or we eliminated a senior or student fare in those two options, it would hopefully move people to the monthly pass and they would still get to take advantage of the lower fare. Option three really looks at just if you guys are driven to increase revenue because it kind of increases things in all areas. And again, these are just all options for consideration. It really depends on communities, what they're looking to achieve in terms of whether or not revenue is the drive or whether it's creating really affordable transit for the masses.
Is there an age, generally speaking, where kids, I mean, you're not going to be a six-year-old getting on the bus by themselves. You might not even get a nine or nine-year-old. There's sort of an age where all of a sudden, there seems to be a threshold where your parents go, I'm going to take the bus by yourself.
Yeah.
Anecdotally, it's around twelve or thirteen. It seems to be, I mean, it varies by community. There's some communities where it's much, much younger. But I think over the greater scheme, it's probably twelve to thirteen is kind of that magic age where children become a little bit more independent. So that high school.
Karen?
So two questions is, what are some of the other communities that says in the report that have moved to eliminating day-based fares? I'd be curious about who's doing that. And also, Beth, your recommendation is requesting option two for the fare. And I just would love to hear why you've selected that one over one. Yeah, so maybe I'll start with that and you can go with the communities. I suggested option two for the simplicity really of the fare structure for usability and for reasons that Lisa's already highlighted. In addition to the fact that it keeps that monthly pass at the same rate we are now. So this will have the least impact on our current system users. That was my thought process there. In addition to using the rule that Lisa just outlined in that with the least kind of impact on ridership and the best impact on revenues. So really, at this point, we're looking more for guidance, but that was just using those rules, kind of the most attractive approach. And I think that ultimately, moving people to that monthly pass and having that be a much more realistic option, it increases the, I mean, improves the onboarding process for drivers as well as users. So just kind of the culmination of those factors. I thought that would be of these options the most attractive.
Thanks. I think about if I was in a community where for two dollars I got to go more than twelve kilometers. But in the community where you only get to go, in fact, mostly less than twelve kilometers for two dollars, it's still not equitable. I would prefer, if you wanted, if you're worried about the change, I would reduce it to a dollar. And as well, I think that the age base is dependent on how complicated the system is. If I have to send my fifteen-year-old and she has to look at this, you know, scheduling a bus and an intersection of a bus that doesn't quite meet up and she's got to wait, I feel less safe about having my fifteen-year-old ride the bus that ensuring that she's going to manage and schedule correctly. If the bus came every twenty minutes as we're moving to and is less complicated and the intersections of the bus were really easy to manage, I would feel safe sending my nine-year-old on the bus. So it's not about the safety of the community, it's about the ease in negotiating the system and having signage and having adequate schedules up at every stop. And all of those things make it easier. And as well, I'm worried, you know, I think about ratio analysis. If you could, you know, removing the barrier, if you had a dollar to put on and get on the bus, I'd find that much more palatable, palatable? Palatable, palatable.
More palatable.
Exactly, palatable than putting in a tunny and having to worry about a tunny on the way back. So if you're going to increase your ridership using a tunny and knowing that everywhere you go is just a tunny, may actually increase the revenue by increasing ridership as opposed to just increasing the prices. And then in the public's mind, you're making it more expensive. You're making it a little bit easier to negotiate, but it's still, you're only going a bike ride away. So if you have a choice of transit modalities, if you want to actually increase transit ridership on a daily basis, decreasing the fare and increasing the ridership is going to bring you in more money.
Now, there's a question at Council.
Yes, I believe you asked about what other communities had gotten rid of discount fares. And the one that I can speak to off the top of my head is Victoria has done that. I'm sure there's a couple of other communities out there, but I'd have to kind of go back and look through. Oh, Sunshine Coast has done it as well recently, yes. So they've done that. And in doing so, I mean, there wasn't really too much backlash from doing that. And we did find an increase in the fares in Victoria. Funnily enough, making it an even two fifty in Victoria and five dollars for a day pass increased the revenue. Now, in terms of the size of communities, what I can tell you is that we looked at all the tier-three systems to compare. And this was the lowest system, other than one other system in the tier-three systems at one seventy-five. Everyone else, all the similar-sized systems are at two dollars currently.
Yeah, the larger communities have zones.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, so looking at the same-sized communities, they're at a two-dollar fare all by themselves and one other community that have one seventy-five. And that's also in the layer report.
Yeah, I think option two is viable. It's not an arduous amount of money. I like the fact that the monthly passes have stayed the same. It keeps your, it drives your ridership towards buying those monthly passes and makes it fair for those who hold them already. I don't know about going down to a dollar. I think there's some inherent costs that have to continue to arise. And I think it's also our cost sharing that we both do between us that needs to be recognized. So I couldn't see going down. But I think option two is fair.
Option two, we're talking about standardizing the cash one? Ted and Chappell?
I mean, I like the fares, seniors, kids and, you know, because kids, sometimes they have our time getting a bucket order or go swimming. The option two, I don't mind option two, but make the day pass three fifty instead of four dollars. And ten tickets, why would you buy ten tickets? I mean, you save two bucks. I would keep that, make that sixteen instead of eight.
I think what Beth was saying is they're trying to encourage people to vote the monthly pass, it's easier for the bus drivers. So minimizing the difference between a ten-ticket pass and the monthly pass is designed to get people to buy the monthly pass. I just wanted to clarify that, is that correct?
That's correct. That's less administrative cost, have less types of tickets for sale out there.
A ten-day pass is twenty dollars, or if you want to buy it, you save two dollars. You should be saving for more for the ten-day pass as well.
But that's exactly, that's, but that's completely counter to what the philosophy is of shortening the gas.
Some people live week by week. You know, I mean, this is making it easier for us, not necessarily the riders. Anyway, it's just, you save two dollars if you buy ten tickets. Should say a little more.
And this is all in the, you know, this is in stages for you guys to have that conversation. We're recommending us continuing to work with staff on this. So if there's recommendations that are coming forward, we can certainly look at them and get more information back to you as well.
Just to clarify, if we do change things that would come in, get to coincide with the expansion in September, is that the goal?
Ideally, that would be great, just because we'll be producing new riders' guides with your new service in it. And at the same time, we could have.
So we don't necessarily have to make decisions today?
Absolutely, that's correct. We don't need to make a decision today.
Yeah.
I mean, do we know how much more money we're going to need for this expansion?
It's a question, yeah.
So does option two cover that?
No.
No, the revenue hasn't come close to covering your costs.
It, sorry, can I just add? It often helps for public perception to time a fare increase with a service expansion. So no, we don't need to make a decision. We don't need to change anything if that's not what Council wishes. But if we decide that we might want to revisit the fare structure, it is a good time to make sure it lines with that September twenty-seventh expansion.
I'm just trying to find the revenue that we bring in now is. So you only have the proposed expansion revenue, you don't have a current revenue? I'm just, I guess my thought is that we don't have a number of people that, you know, if we made the system zero cost, even just for, you know, in a high, in a month that isn't in the middle of the summer, taking away tourism, in an off, like off-peak month. If you took a month and said transit's free this month, you would be able to get the number of riders and be able to compare it to the base fare. We don't have any maximum number of riders. And to understand if a fare, if the fare is actually inhibiting ridership or if it's just supplemental, like, oh, I have a tunny in my pocket, I'm going to take transit. But you're, you know, if it was, the monthly pass makes sense. But as Ted said, the people that you want using transit don't have the forty dollars for monthly pass. And the people that are taking, you know, I've never thought of getting monthly pass for my daughter. I think it's a good idea, but she takes transit quite a bit. And, you know, it's pretty much the only mode of transportation for teenagers. And it is for any low-income family. I do wake up and say, you know, are we going to pay that much? Or are we going to go pick up in the car? Because it's less gas money to go pick. If it's less gas money than it is transit money, if people have a car, they're going to utilize the car. The idea of transit is to get people out of their car, make it an easy, convenient system. And we don't have any base level of numbers to know how much that fare is inhibiting ridership, to know that is it going to, is two dollars the right amount? Is a dollar a right amount? And then be able to do the analysis and be able to say, if we increase ridership by this much because we're losing it riders, when it's free, this many people ride it. When it's not free, it reduces it by half. So we pick up a quarter and make more by charging a dollar than two dollars. I find it difficult to make decisions when we don't have those numbers or understand how fares actually need, you know, we can look at larger communities.
We had this conversation, I think in my first term, when we did the first transit expansion. We talked, and we brought in the free-for-students in the summer program. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is people, doing a month pilot project or even a summer pilot project, isn't a great way to determine what Counselor Chappell's trying to do because people need certainty in order to make the big decisions, like, I don't buy the second car or I work somewhere else or whatever, or I try to get different shifts. They don't make a decision because of the unpredictability of it. So it's hard to get to that number that Counselor Chappell's trying to find. Is that correct?
Do you want to talk about Whistler's example?
Well, no, ask them, then you can ask.
Yes, I think that Whistler had a program last year where they provided free transit service on Saturdays. There was about a 20% increase.
There was a.
And I think that that was a responsive measure because the traffic on the highway was getting to a point where it was actually sort of hurting, sort of hurting their economy, basically, because it was just total red light. So to answer that question, there is no exact, you know, formula to sort of predict what the ridership impacts are. I think the important thing to stress is there's no such thing as free, right? Because if it's free to the user, then that cost just gets incurred by the local partner, right? Because all of the revenue that's collected today goes against the local partner's share. But certainly, I think that we can report back to the fare revenue manager at BC Transit and ask some of these questions and provide maybe a bit more information with regards to option two and some of the impacts with regards to ridership if that were to be pursued.
And I do have some details in the report in regards to what each option does in terms of revenue, overall revenue. So for option one, it's an increase of $19,000 in revenue or 8%. Option two is a 12% increase in overall revenue. And option three would be an 18% increase in overall revenue based on the analysis using current ridership and using the Simpson-Curtin rule that will be applied or, you know, standard operating for fares.
There is a philosophical discussion about basically tolling transit period. We don't toll our roads, everyone using our road system, but somehow we've put a toll on transit. So, I mean, there's a philosophical discussion about fares period and should we just consider transit like anything else and not use a user-paid system? We don't use a user-paid system on our roads. We do it from property tax base. So that's another philosophical discussion, I think, that we need to have. And we've been dancing around the conversation for about 12 years. But, I mean, I think that's a conversation that is worth having as part of this public forum. I mean, it comes off the general property tax side of the revenue equation, not yours. But I follow up and then consider.
Yep, that's basically, I was going to point that philosophy out, and I totally agree with that philosophy. And that before, when we ran the free program, it was impossible to get ridership because the perception of our transit program was pathetic. We didn't have buses that ran on time, we didn't have a large, a robust system. And I think this moving into a robust system, every 20 men transit and a reduction of fare would be considerable ridership change. And that's just speculation I'd love to know, is that was actually true?
Counselor Elliott?
Oh, yeah, so I don't mind option two, although I still think, in my mind, there should be a seniors level for the 10 ticket.
Okay.
And, and only because, like Ted said, you know, every dollar counts a lot for a lot of them. And if they're not regular transit users, that's a big jump to afford $20, but maybe, I don't know, not. I think 18 is a bit high. I'd like to see it a bit lower for seniors, but adults and students could pay the same amount because the student pass is $20. And if you're taking the bus as a student, you're taking a lot more, 10 times a month. So that's fine, I don't mind that. The one thing too, though, is I know you can buy passes at Walmart. I'm wondering where you can buy them downtown?
Yeah, you can buy passes here in Maxwell Hall and Brennan Park. But that was one of the things I was going to suggest, is that we should be working and could be working to ensure that those tickets are sold at the senior center and other places. So if, you know, this discussion, the results are regardless, we could work on making those tickets more accessible.
That'd be great. And also making sure that we touch base with our local not-for-profits to understand how people can subsidize their transportation if needed for low-income families. That's something, so we should know that information and it should all come together as a package.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think if it was at the senior center, we could sell tickets there. Where, even Brennan Park, where people can access, buying passes would be helpful.
And I just, I can add one thing too. For seniors, many are, many users are probably with the best pass program too. So those people would still be able to access these rides at the same rate.
Doug?
Yeah, thanks. Just to add my comment to everybody else is that I'd go along with option two. And I can see the advantage of just having the one fare as opposed to discounted fares. I think for an isolated trip, losing that discount won't make any difference to either a student or an adult. And when they are repetitive users, then the passes are available for them at the same price. And so really, I don't think that is a hardship. I appreciate there are people in the community that will have difficulty leaving these fares or almost any fare. But I think there are other techniques, you know, we're looking at a structure for the entire community. And thankfully, I don't think that's the majority that we're talking about that would have difficulty. And I think there are other techniques, as Counselor Elliott hinted at, that we can use to deal with low-income riders to make it affordable for them. But I think when we're considering the general population, that's a fair fair system.
Thanks, Doug. I think even using the nonprofits, if we had something, a mechanism in place that we could work with nonprofits, not just say, if they actually do something about it, and I agree with Counselor Elliott, that having that mechanism in place right now so that they have a way to deal with even municipalities subsidizes a certain amount. Do we already, with shelter, subsidizing transit passes?
They have access to programs already.
Yeah. Perfectly, if we had those mechanisms in place, that's an option to try it out. But I would like to look at those other ways to assess numbers.
I think, you know, just generally speaking, I think the ease of option two is good. If we're going to take away the student 1.25, we want to increase the age up to.
Top is all right.
Basically, the age where kids are pretty much going to go with their parents, for the most part, without their parents.
I just to add to that as well, in regards to age, many students, we find, take the public transit when they're accessing financial programs. And I believe that that is around the age 11 or 12 is when they are taking an access both middle school and higher grades in elementary schools. So it might just be, we're talking to some of the schools that we're already working with and kind of assessing what that age, that comfort would be.
Yeah. But I mean, if we went with the option two, I would want to raise that age significantly. Otherwise, families at some point are going to take the bus when it costs, you know, $12 for the bus. Okay, so we're gonna, this is, we're not making decisions today on that particular front. Okay, so we're way over time. I've had a feeling that that would be a little one to finish up. So the final piece is the regional stuff. Any questions? I mean, really, what we're doing with the regional stuff is it's going out to the public now and there were not any decisions necessarily in front of us today, it was just. So, any aspects on the regional piece of it? Doug, can that suit?
Yeah, except I'll leave it to tomorrow. I'll be there tomorrow. So, but I'll just ask you tomorrow about a couple of templates and other parts of the problems that might apply here. We need a tough one. Sure.
And certainly, the big thing, the big thing that failed, when it failed, was funding. Particularly, we started setting it up in a reserve fund. It didn't actually set up a taxation or a sustainable funding model to keep it going. So that was fundamentally what happened last time around. So we've been talking about a motor fuel tax regionally with the province over the years and with the other municipalities in the regional districts. So that's still in our thoughts upon in terms of what we'd like to explore to be able to fund the regional transit piece. Something else, but like.
I'm just wondering how the talks are going with TransLink on integration between systems?
It's, I used to work for TransLink, so I know some of those people. So it's great to sort of get back into that discussion, working with them. But I think that they're open to it because I think that it benefits their system as well because it brings more people into their community and allows people to, to come on. I think that as far as fare integration, I think that's a little bit more of a comprehensive discussion needs to take place because they have the compass pass and we don't have that technology. So we have some examples in the Fraser Valley where we connect with TransLink. So we'll sort of use that experience. And I think that it's a, it's a very positive partnership with Westfam and with TransLink and with City of Vancouver today. Sounds great. And with Lions Bay as well. We're working with Peter DeJean, who's the CAO there, to talk about just keeping him up to date with all the details.
So on that, just one more thing, the governance model, we're obviously prebiding on the chicken and egg sort of, you know, do we, how do we move the idea of the motor fuel tax along with the province and with the local users and taxpayers? And when, when do we need to implement the proper governance structure to? So we're looking for some advice on what comes first? Do we set up the regional governance structure, move into a public engagement piece with regard to motor fuel tax, and then figure out how to fund it? Or do we do the engagements? And if the communities basically say, we don't want to fund this through motor fuel tax, like TransLink does, what are, like, we're looking at the sequencing of it and we're.
That's a great metaphor, the chicken and the egg. I hadn't thought of it that way, but it is true, like, what comes first? The service design itself or the governance structure, right? Like, what drives the discussion? I think for this round of engagement, it's going to be very low-key. And we're not going to get into the dirty details or specific details of funding. We're essentially just going to ask, what are your thoughts of how funding could be, you know, improved or changed or made more sustainable? So to answer that question, I think that it's going to require a lot of champions in the region and from different layers of government to get together at a table, to work together and find a solution that works best.
Are you going to ask specific questions, like, property tax should fund it, tax on fuel should fund it, you're not? You're chickens. You're chickens.
Continue your metaphor, brains. I think that that discussion will, may take place at a certain time. But at this moment, we're still just in the, did we hear you correctly, phase? I think that we don't want to push this project too quickly. We want to do it right. So we're sort of deliberately taking the steps at a methodical pace to make sure that it's done correctly.
I thought you might say that. Awesome. Any more questions? So there are a couple, just read these out, that the district received a letter, report from BC Transit dated January 31st. And that the district staff worked with BC Transit to implement the September 2017 service expansion and furthered that the district staff worked with BC Transit to implement fare increases based on option two outlined within this report that aligns with the September 2017 transit service expansion. So we are kind of asking for a bit of guidance there right now.
Yeah, but there is the alternative, the or, the staff work, unsure of what, Counselor.
So I guess I'm looking to Counsel, if we went out and said option two with an increase in the age to 12, is that something Counsel is willing to put forward on today? Okay, so we're just going to put the motions on the floor and, yes?
Can we just put 12? Can we not do what Beth said and go back to the schools and really figure out what that age is?
Yes.
Based on feedback that we, that we can get from our partners? So can we just say, increase the age?
Yeah, I don't want it to be over script, but I think around 12.
I think 12.
Twelve and a half.
12 would very likely be the response we receive, but it might.
Yeah, I don't think we're married to 12, but that seems like a.
Okay, so with some freedom to do additionally.
Well, it's a little bit of freedom, yeah. I mean, if it all of a sudden goes up to 18, I think that should be, come back to Counsel. If it goes down to six, that should come back.
Okay.
Should be 14 or 15.
Yeah, anyway, well, I don't want to prescribe it too much, but in that vicinity. Okay, so we're basically doing those top three with the inclusion of an increase in the age for the free ridership.
Okay. For clarification, the or recommendation, we could still consider option one, make a few tweaks, bring them back to Counsel with that age if you're interested. Okay.
Okay.
So I'll move that.
I think we moved it second already. Oh, maybe not. Doug, second, I think, Peter? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, Counselor Chappell opposes, motion carries. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. You were going to move. You're to review. I'm just, I'm actually, we didn't have a discussion with this, is it?
You were going to move.
No, I was going to move the age.
Okay. Moving on to step code information update.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. Brief introduction here to Free Plus, our chief building inspector. We have Bob Deeks, David Rittberg, and Chris, I'm sorry.
Chris Bosman.
Chris Bosman, representing regionally and locally the Canadian Home Builders Association. They want to talk to us, give Counsel some information about what's known as the step code, sometimes the stretch code, changes on building energy performance coming to the BC Building Code in the coming months and years. And I believe it's a provincial working group that you gentlemen all part of.
I was part of the original working group, and I'm on the advisory committee.
Sort of advising the province where to go. So these gentlemen can walk you through where the code might be going in the coming months.
All right.
Thank you. So I'm David Rittberg, and I'm pleased to be here with my colleagues today from the Home Builders Association and Richard Matthews, who we work closely with, and bringing an update on the Energy Step Code. So the Climate Leadership Plan released in 2016 states that the province is implementing a number of policies to encourage the development of net zero buildings. And one of those policies develop energy efficiency requirements for new buildings that go beyond those currently contained in the BC Building Code. So the Energy Step Code is a set of incremental performance steps for new buildings that go from the BC Building Code to net zero energy-ready buildings. And the Energy Step Code supports the Building Act, supports the Building Act by providing consistent provincial standards for energy efficiency to replace a wide range of existing policies and programs developed by local governments independent of each other. So what's happening currently is different regions have their own little quirks to the building code. So to that end, I'd like to introduce Bob Deeks, who is president of RDC Fine Homes, who is a member of the working group involved with the development of the Energy Step Code to make the presentation today. And among other, many other professional accomplishments, Bob is the chair of the Canadian Home Builders Association Technical Research Committee, vice-chair of the CHBA Net Zero Energy Housing Council, and a past president of CHBA BC.
Awesome. Welcome on.
All right, thanks very much. So as David identified, I was actually part of the original Energy Efficiency Working Group, the technical committee. And I was on the committee that was talking about the, how this was going to be implemented down the road. And I'm now on, I'm representing CHBA BC on the advisory committee. This presentation that I'm going to give you today, it's a shortened version of the original presentation, trying to keep this to about 10 to 15 minutes. The presentation was drafted by Zach Reme, who's the Senior Policy Analyst for Building and Safety Standards Branch. And Zach is the staff person who's been overseeing the development of the stretch code in British Columbia. Uh-oh.
That's helpful.
Yep, if you click it, it should start filling in. There you go.
All right. So to, so just to bring this into context, as you may be aware, BC introduced the Building Act in 2015. And the entire act will come into, into enactment in December of 2017. And one of the key components of the Building Act is to try and drive consistency in the interpretation of the Building Code. And so this is where the Step Code comes into place to provide opportunities for municipalities like the District of Swamish to engage with additional performance requirements with regard to the code around energy that would be consistent through the entire province. And this also, as David identified, ties into the Climate Leadership Plan, which has established in an effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions province-wide to net zero-ready buildings within the Energy Code by 2032. And this would be for all buildings, housing as well as big buildings. And this is, I guess, key to the Climate Action Charter that was signed at EBCM a year or so ago. So the original Energy Efficiency Working Group that developed the parameters for the Step Code included members from, throughout the entire community, representation from local governments who actually sponsored the Energy Efficiency Working Group. Just one thing to note is that when we talk about the Building Act, the Building Act is to enforce the Building Code across the province in all areas except Vancouver, because Vancouver has their own charter and their own building code. But representation on the Energy Efficiency Working Group, local governments, provincially, the developers and builders through CHBA BC, the Urban Development Institute, Greater Vancouver Home Builders Association, professions and trades, so the Architects Institute of British Columbia, and professional engineers and geotop scientists were represented, as were the utilities, Fortis and BC Hydro. So currently, throughout the province, particularly when we look at Building Code, we've got a range of programs that address how the code is interpreted. And then when we look at energy efficiency, there are different requirements in different communities to try and improve energy efficiency and reduce greenhouse gases. communities to try and improve energy efficiency and reduce greenhouse gases. It's an inconsistent landscape that isn't compliant with the new building act that's coming into force and creates confusion for builders working through multiple jurisdictions. One of the common, some common issues identified when it says points versus performance, if we look at a certification program such as LEED, LEED is an overall strategy that doesn't necessarily have to focus on energy efficiency to get that level of certification. And so where the step code is focusing itself is an energy first policy, and I'll get into some of the details on that a little bit further in the presentation here. So what is the step code? It's a series of steps to build capacity and educate the industry around increasing energy efficiency in buildings. I'm not getting, I won't get quite into the details here. It's another slide later on, oops. But just to highlight that there are programs throughout the province that are encouraging or through bylaws are enforcing energy efficiency for development permit application processes, and there's a list of them there. I don't believe Squamish has any requirement for enhancements to the energy code currently. So the recommendation that went before the minister was a single step code with five tiers that was flexible enough so that communities could engage at different levels of code based on the needs of the community and the developments that were putting, being put forward. And of course, this creates a pathway to net zero housing. Interestingly, if we look at the way we build houses today, it's very, very little different than it was 15 or even 25 years ago. And so as the province had started to engage with energy efficiency within the building code in the late 2000s, we've probably come about 10% of the way towards net zero ready buildings. So in the last 17 years, we've improved energy efficiency maybe 10%. And of course, to achieve the goal of net zero ready buildings by 2032, we're really faced with a challenge over the next 15 years of improving energy efficiency in all buildings by over 70%. So there's an enormous challenge there for everyone. So the, the plan is, is a performance-based application of the building code. So rather than in today's world where there's, there's a series of recommendations around insulation values that you have to achieve, it's a prescriptive path, the recommendation here for the step code is that it would be a software model approach to energy efficiency. And if we look at step code, if we look at tier one in the step code, what that's going to reference is what they call an enhanced compliance path whereby you would have to meet the current energy requirements within the building code, but you have to do it with an energy advisor and show that the house meets the standard through an energy model such as HOT 2000. And the important part of the step code is that it's an envelope first. So it's focused on the energy efficiency of the building before it considers the energy efficiency of the mechanical equipment that's inside of the building, recognizing that the most expensive part of what we build are the walls, the roof, the foundation, and the windows. And so we want to achieve our energy efficiency standard in that long-term investment, recognizing that a furnace can be replaced down the road, and that technology likely is going to develop better technology in the future, but it's very, very expensive to increase the energy efficiency or the insulation values in the other parts of the home itself. So proposed implementation, the code, the step code is in place for voluntary application right now. So for builders who would opt to offer to engage within the step code, that's available today. And when the building act formally comes into play in December of 17, then for local governments to enforce increases to the energy code, they will be able to do that following the step code process, and they'll be able to enact that through bylaws. So I'm not going to go into this slide in too much detail, but if we looked at the columns on the left, step code one, which is referred to as the enhanced compliance path, which is what I noted just a little bit earlier, is the current targets within the BC Building Code. All that would be different is that you would engage the services of an energy advisor, somebody who is trained to model the house through something like the HOT 2000 software. And through that modeling process, you would show that it met the intent of the energy code. So there's no additional requirements in terms of the cost for physically building the building. There is an additional cost to engage the services of an energy advisor. You provide that model approach, and that satisfies step code one. Step code two is approximately 10% beyond what the current energy code requires. It also brings in a requirement for air tightness testing. So one of the low, the easiest way to improve energy efficiency in buildings, but also to improve ventilation requirements, thermal comfort and durability is by building buildings a little bit more airtight. And the only way that we can really drive the industry to developing better techniques around air tightness is to test it. Interestingly, the city of Vancouver has been requiring air tightness testing probably for about the last five years. And while everybody had to do a blower test because there was no minimum requirement that they had to achieve, they actually didn't see a lot of improvement around the average ratings that they were getting. So up until very recently, the average home in Vancouver was at about five air changes, which technically is very, very leaky. And so moving to step code two, there would be a requirement for three air changes, which is actually not that challenging, but very important that we start to, at the enhanced compliance path stage, require people to do a test, but we don't have a minimum requirement. So at least they start to test their buildings and can start to understand where their leak points are, so that when we do drive them to meet a minimum standard, they have a general idea of how they're going to achieve that. Step code two would equivalent to about Interguide 80, if anybody is familiar with the current, the older Interguide rating scale. Step code three would be 20% beyond the current code requirements and has an improvement in the air tightness, down to 2.5 air changes. Step code four is going to 40% beyond energy code, and for anybody who's familiar with some of the certifications out there, would be equivalent to the R2000 standard. As you're getting up to 40% beyond the current energy code requirement, you're starting to incur some significant additional costs and some difficulties that are not obvious for the average builder who hasn't pulled to that standard before. The air tightness requirement goes down to 1.5 air changes. And then step code five really is the end goal that everybody's looking forward to. And depending on where you live in Canada, anywhere between 2032 and 2035 is essentially the goal that's being set forward for net zero ready buildings. And then to help achieve that level of energy efficiency, you're looking at one air change. Interestingly, we're looking at net zero or the passive house standard. Passive house actually requires a 0.6 air change requirement. So the complete step code report is available now at the government of BC building site there, and there will be more resources available shortly, technical resources, updates. One of the important pieces of this is to identify what the cost benefit analysis is and to make sure that it's very clear how we're going to achieve the step code requirements in different climate zones across the province. So depending on where you live, whether it's the lower mainland area, Squamish, Whistler, Prince George, or further north, Fort St. John, it's not one size fits all. So for Whistler to achieve step code three would require a different building than would be required in Squamish or would be required in Vancouver because it's colder, there's more, more eating degree days. And so they're doing a cost benefit analysis to make sure that they clearly understand the cost associated with the different steps in the different climate zones, and that the requirements that they're setting forward are consistent with their expectation around 10% better, 20% better, so on and so forth. That work is intended to be finished early in the summer, ready for distribution and for the, the integration of the step code into the building act at the end of this So some of the information and tools that are available, these are examples of two forms that are being developed to help the local building departments with engagement with the step code. The first one is a standardized checklist that would be supplied with the building permit application. It's filled out by the energy advisor just to help the plan checker identify that the house complies with whatever step code is being applied for. The second form is a checklist that is filled out after the house is completed, again, filled out by the energy advisor to identify that the house complies with the step code requirement that was identified when the house was applying for its building permit. So, you know, how do we, you know, what's the end goal and how do we define success of the step code? You know, one of the really important things when we consider how, how little progress we've made in the last 35 years in terms of energy efficiency around houses, and to some degree, it's not without trying. But what we realize is that there's an enormous education component there to allow the industry to build, buildings that both meet the intent of the energy step code or the energy code, but we're also building durable safe houses. And that's education for the builders on the ground, it's education for Richard and his staff, it's education for elected officials. And it's a, it's a big step to go from one to five. And so what the step code does is it allows municipalities to engage in baby steps here so that they can educate everybody around how to successfully achieve this end goal of reaching net zero housing by 2032. And then it also acts as a capacity building mechanism. So one of the examples that was put forward is, say, a community like Camlins all of a sudden decided they just even wanted to mandate step code two across the entire community. While moving the industry to a 10% better standard than the energy code may not seem like a big step, one of the things you have to realize is that every single permit application now has to be filled out by an energy advisor. And frankly, there's not enough energy advisors in the entire province to deal with all the applications that even a city like Camlins would require. And so this is a phased approach to build capacity from the professional side as well, as well as building the education and capacity within the staffing and the boots on the And that's the presentation, and I hope there's some time for questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. I've seen a couple of presentations on stretch code slash step code, and this was the clearest one I've actually ever heard, so well done. And it was laid out in a really logical way, and for, for municipal to understand how we can, over time, I haven't seen it presented like that, so it was really, in that simple way, so that was really valuable. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. So two questions. One is, you kept talking about houses, but I think that this could apply to all types of buildings. Am I correct in saying that?
That's right. So this was more focused around what we would call part nine buildings, which are houses in small multi-unit residential buildings. The step code is also in place for part three buildings, which would include everything else.
And do you have any sense of what it means in costs of construction to go from base to step one, to step two, to step three? I mean, we came along and said, gee, we have great aspirations for this, we're going to step four, and that might kill the building industry in our town right off the bat. So Russ, it would have to be very measured steps, keeping in mind the cost of housing and cost of construction.
Absolutely. And so that's the cost benefit analysis that the province is working on right now. Will be available to all the communities so they can get a general idea of what the proposed costs are going to be based on the climate zone to move from one step to the other. The one, Richard and I were talking, we're actually doing a step code five house here in Squamish, and we're going to have an open house on the weekends of April the 29th and then May the 6th. And so if you were interested, I'd be willing to do a VIP tour for staff and council, and we can walk you through it. It'll be at lockup, so you can actually see what's going on behind the walls. And I can give you some feedback in terms of what the additional cost would be to get to that net zero standard here in Squamish.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
I think that would be great, call it a VIP tour. But no, I think that would be really valuable, I would be happy to do that.
And it, it's, well, it's easy to talk about. I mean, you probably trip over analysis that's particularly coming from the passive house institute about the cost of getting to that standard. Generally, it's a lot more expensive than most people are willing to admit to. I think that technology will help us over time. And so what we're talking about today in terms of the energy requirements to achieve how the standard where a house produces as much energy as it uses is going to change. Window technology will have a big impact on that, and of course, solar technology, once we get solar panels that are 40% more efficient as opposed to what we see today, which is 15 to 20% efficient, then that changes the equation dramatically, particularly if those panels are a dollar a kilowatt. Right now, we're looking at about $3 a kilowatt for panels that are about 15 to 18% efficient. If we could have panels that are 40% efficient that are a dollar a kilowatt, now all of a sudden, the amount of energy that we can produce on the roof at an affordable rate reduces the cost of actually having to build a building.
Thank you. Having just built a small home that is relatively passive, it's, I, the, I didn't find the upgrades et cetera in insulation and handling and expansiveness of it, and that much more expensive for our climatic reading than the normal building code. Because the normal building code for this region is really expensive currently. So I haven't even updated the slabs and all the, all the insulation requirements, don't seem that expensive. Going passive is, I think for our region, with the solar requirement in this region, it's going to be really difficult without battery storage. So in storage, we'll make it that much more interesting to move to passive or to move to energy efficient homes where you can actually store your own energy as opposed to relying on government subsidies.
Did you do it for the five passive?
No. We didn't do a zero cert, I think we did all the steps, we, foam insulation, yeah, foam insulation, it's pretty much passive, we had it turned on the E that was turned off.
So maybe you could just quickly talk about the difference between passive and net zero.
Yes.
So net zero ready would be a house that, as designed with solar panels on the roof, could produce as much energy as it uses. So at a, at an envelope first strategy, you put as, as much insulation into the building as you can to reduce heat loss, to limit the amount of energy that the house would use in a very similar way that the passive house standard would. If we look at the old Interguide rating scale, a net zero ready house or a passive house would be in around Interguide 88 or 89. And so the two standards are very well aligned that way. While some of the passive house guys may disagree, if you look at some of my colleagues across the country who have modeled houses and built houses to this, to, to that standard, they would tell you that what they need to do to get to an Interguide 88, 89, and what you need to do to get to passive is very similar in terms of the thermal envelope properties.
Yeah, so the one thing that stood out for me was because it's not prescriptive, how you get, you reach each of those levels, the homeowner, the builder, and the architect can decide how they will reach each step.
That's right.
So then that makes it, I'm trying to think of it from Richard's point of view, it's not really a checklist, like you've done this, and this, and this, therefore it meets step two. Every house could be different, how they meet step two or step three. And so that's why you have the energy consultant to go through house. They're going to be the key between what gets built and our building inspector is saying, yes, that needs to be, because we can't possibly go out and figure that out perfectly.
No, and so the energy advisor is going to become a much more, it will become a key partner in the entire process from the initial modeling. So, you know, should Squamish even elect to go to, to, to make a requirement where a certain subdivision or create an incentive around a compliance path, package, it actually makes Richard and his staff's job a lot easier because the energy advisor fills out essentially a compliance form, submits it to Richard's staff, they trust that that person is a professional. So as long as the energy advisor has signed off to say that this house meets the standard, step one or step two, and then of course, when the house is finished, the energy advisor would be coming back in, they would do the blower test, they would ensure that the insulation values met the standard that was established, and they would sign off again. And those are those two forms.
That you showed us, yeah.
Yeah.
So the second piece of. So the second piece around this is then the education piece. So you could sort of say, once this comes into being in December, that the community could sort of jump on it really quickly and say, all right, we want to, we want to get up to step three really quickly. But that doesn't necessarily leave time for our builders, the energy consultants, all that other stuff to come into play globally.
Right, so...
So how does Squamish work with our building community to make sure that we're putting in a common sense plan that, you know, we don't miss out on a building boom to not sort of increase the level of energy efficiency in the new buildings, but also we don't get ahead and kill the building?
So one of the things that Richard and I talked about was possibly getting a group of people together, some key builders in the community, staff, and maybe a council representative to sit down and brainstorm, you know, how can we take advantage of the step code opportunities here? Certainly, one option right away would be to consider fast-tracking permit applications just for a compliance path opportunity. And Richard and I had talked about, you know, take one staff person, dedicate them to, as a plan checker, for permit applications from the compliance path. Feedback from the district in North Vancouver is, is that when people apply for building permits along the performance path, it actually shortens the amount of time it takes a plan checker to approve a permit. And so just by getting people to apply along the compliance path, step one, you're going to make Richard's staff's job easier, provide an incentive, and promise a fast-track for that to encourage people just to start to understand how they would model their house through HOT 2000, start getting used to using the services of an energy advisor, go through the process of doing a blower test, recognizing that there's no minimum blower test requirement, and now, right away, you're creating an education opportunity. Richard was telling me about a local builder who blew our test the first time, was really surprised at where they found their lead points and how much easier it was when they went to build the second house because they already had a strategy to address those lead points that they found the first time. And so starting off with some baby steps around the compliance path, add also, once there's a demand for energy advisors, you know, somebody's going to move here and set up shop, we build capacity around that. And then look for opportunities in specific developments where you may want to impose a higher standard with a builder who, you know, like Kindred would have experience building to a higher step code level, and give them an opportunity possibly to do a small development at a step code two or step code three, that then you could showcase to other builders in terms of, here's an example of how you can do this, and then you might have some evidence about, you know, what was the additional cost. Certainly, one of the key discussions through the implementation committee coming from the builder and development side was, you know, they would like to see some incentives to help offset the additional costs, particularly upfront. And so that would be a discussion for possibly this, you know, if you put a group together is, you know, what's affordable for the district of Squamish because it's recognizing that, you know, just listening to the transit discussion, there's not buckets of money here that you can start parceling out. So there's, you know, some incentive to get builders and developers to engage with a higher standard, recognizing that you don't want to just download that cost back to the community because that has a negative impact on housing affordability or affordable housing. I mean, we have seen the cost of high-performance buildings slowly start to come down as people better understand how to do this. But to, you know, put a net zero house out there or a net zero ready house, from our experience, recognizing that we have, we have never built to a minimum standard, so for us to go from a mid-interguide rating to an Interguide 88 or 89, you know, we're likely spending $15,000 to $20,000 additionally. And so I've heard, you know, some people say that to get from a base building code to a net zero ready house could be anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000.
So just building on that, don't go the council ways. Does the province have a strategy to, as this step code gets introduced, to actually increase education or skills to actually deliver on energy advisors and get people certified up to that? Because as you said, I mean, if we started this today, we wouldn't be able to get anywhere because there's no real town that does this, or very few.
Yeah.
So does the province have a plan to follow up the step code with an actual skills development program, investment, implementation?
So they don't have anything that I know of that's specifically targeted to building capacity for a stretch, for a step code? And just to clarify, originally, it was called a stretch code?
Yes.
And then the committee changed it to step code, so it's part of the step.
I think step is actually a more intuitive word.
That's right.
So I think that is helpful.
That's what the committee...
So you know, as far as you know, the province doesn't have a strategy to accompany this?
There's nothing, there's nothing specific, but there are two really great funding opportunities right now. There's the BC job grants, and there's the LNG training fund. And so for people who want to engage in that education opportunity, there's an enormous amount of government funding there to help them do it.
So if we, for example, maybe through the chamber or through CAPM, or through something, wanted to provide courses on growing some energy advisors locally, we could do that through this funding, you're saying?
You could, well, no, I'd actually, unfortunately, neither one of those funding opportunities are available to the local government. But that being said...
Who are they though?
They're available to private enterprise. So for, you know, somebody like us. I know this because my wife works for the R M O W, and when we found out about the BC job grants, I told her about it, and so she looked into it and discovered that as a municipality, that it wasn't available. But there are other organizations like CHBABC.
We could help facilitate it, maybe the advisory council.
Yeah, so through CHBABC or CHBAC the Sky, there could be a partnership there. CHBABC is one of the service organizations that conducts education for energy advisors. They also have courses around building science to help builders better understand how to reach a higher standard. And certainly with the continuing professional development requirement for builder licensing, a large part of that education is driven towards technological improvements to building practices.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's a similar question because who are these energy advisors? Because you refer to professionals, but is there a professional association, for example, like architects or engineers, so you can rely on the signature, you know, you know if there's something behind that signature? And so if we're asking our building inspector to rely on the signature of an energy advisor, who are they? I mean, is it like, you know, building inspectors, which was anybody that wanted to put their name on the side of a truck? Could be a building inspector for a while, and some were good and some weren't good. So if we're going to have a system that's credible, because there might be incentives that the person qualifies for based on that signature, there might be bylaw requirements that they have to meet based on that signature, that's a very important person, just like an engineer is in a building or an architect. And so without that person and those qualifications and that regulation of that profession, the way you described it, it's not going to work. It would have to be Richard going out there and inspecting every house or somebody as a staff, and then it becomes unworkable. So it's, the training is one thing. I mean, is it a subset of the engineering profession? Are there courses involved? Is it going through BCIT? Are people being educated today? Because otherwise, it seems pretty hard for this to get off the ground.
So to become an energy advisor, the course content is developed and managed from Entercan in Ottawa. It's driven down through service providers like CHBABC. And Entercan manages the certification process for energy advisors. It's a fairly rigorous education and testing process that they have to go through to demonstrate their performance within the software that's used for the modeling. So it doesn't fall underneath, they're not engineers, they're not trained to that level of certification, but they are managed and monitored through Entercan to a high standard.
And are they, are there some being graduated today? Or, I mean, is this, is this an active group?
It's a very active group. So if you remember, some of the incentive programs that existed in the 2000s with Smart BC, for example, all those programs required the services of an energy advisor to come in and do the initial modeling. They were all renovation tax credits that were available, either provincially through with Smart BC, and then there was a federal program as well. And so energy advisors have been around for at least 15 years, and there were more of them while those government incentive programs were in place through the late 2000s. Some of them just ran out of work when those incentive programs fell by the wayside. But with an increasing level of awareness around the opportunity for energy modeling and new housing and some of the incentive program, well, some of the programs that have been engaged within other municipalities, there are some very established companies that offer energy advisor services. Certainly, there is a very professional group, core group of people in the province who are doing this work today, as there are across the country. We don't have anywhere near the number of people to address even a compliance path across the province, and so building capacity in that one area is key to this. And I think that engagement at a local level, and particularly, it's a, to some degree, it's a build it and they will come because you're not going to have people stepping up and starting an energy advisor business if they don't see there's any work. So the first step would be to say, in January of 2018, the district of Squamish will have an opportunity for a fast-track on building permit applications if you follow step one. And so that would give some time for somebody to put up their hand and go, I have experience in the industry, I'm going to take the final step and become certified as an energy advisor, and I'm going to set up shop in Squamish because I know there's going to be enough business here to keep me busy.
And that certification law is federal?
Yes.
It's a federal organization?
Yeah. And it, so it's driven through service organizations, and CHBABC is one of the service organizations in the province of British Columbia that delivers that course content.
And the course is how many days or how long?
I think it's a week, it's a one-week course, and then you have five assignments that you need to complete and pass.
Susan and I, just because of time, you okay?
Well, now to the incentives. You're hoping to get an action item out of us on the incentives?
Not today.
So we're waiting for consultation from you guys?
Well, I thought that's why, you know, it might be worth setting up a group of builders and officials.
I think the next step may be to create a little task force or a group to sort of come up with. The step code, if I understand, isn't actually going to be implementable until January 2018?
December of this year.
27.
It'll be able to enact it in bylaw.
Okay. So, so we need to basically do an engagement process leading up to some decision-making that may, that can be enacted in December?
Right.
If we choose.
And looking at, you know, what's the first, what's the first step in that, recognizing that once it's in place through the building act, you know, bylaws could be enacted over time. You know, one of the things, this is, it's going to be an evolving process because technology, I think, in five years is going to have a significant impact on how we view this. And so we have one path that we would chart over the next five years, and then we may have to revisit this. I suspect, I do also sit on the committee for housing and small business, housing and small buildings for the national code development. So I suspect that what we're going to see in 2020 from the national building code will be something that will be in around between step two and step three. So the likelihood is the province of British Columbia is going to accept those code changes probably by 2022. And so we have about five years before we're going to see mandated ongoing increases in the energy code. What it will include, I'm not entirely too sure, but there seems to be a very strong mandate locally, provincially, and federally to drive further requirements for energy efficiency within the building code. So something that would start to educate the community by 2022, in and around that step code two, step code three, I think would be a good plan.
So next steps?
Okay, the next, I think the first step is we create this advisory group that will then, and I'm just crafting a motion that hopefully the council will consider, unless you have any idea.
No, I didn't craft one, I was just going to do it on the floor.
We're so good at that.
We're so good at that. No, I was going to just express my support for that advisory committee. But I don't know whether you want to do it through ARES task force, or whether you just want to have a community advisory committee, which gives it a little bit more freedom to move and more flexibility, which I think actually is a better model.
So this is where I was kind of going, that the district convenes an advisory group, and I'll kind of leave it in staff's hands to convene it, that is made up of developers, professionals, and I think we'll just look at staff to fill in all the gaps, staff and a council member, to advise council on how to initiate and implement a strategy for December 2017 when the step code comes into effect. Seconded, seconded by Council Chicago.
We should actually look at this prior to 2017 because we're rewriting the building bylaws, so it'd be a good time to...
No, I think we just, what I'm saying, what we're saying here is that we get this all so that when the step code is implementable in December 2017, we're ready for that step. So absolutely, we expect that work to be done so that we can act on it when it comes. I think that's the intent of the motion, so, yeah, absolutely, Richard. Yeah, go ahead.
It might be wise to include some of the groups who are going to be building social housing or core housing because they have a whole affordability index and how they get their buildings built within the step code. It might be good to have that voice for the community there as well, not just builders, but people actually grappling with the affordability issue.
And affordability, the building lifespan, not just the last...
There is, there is some evidence that says that making the initial investment upfront certainly pays off over a long-term, you know, a long-term building, it will pay itself back. There's, you know, talk about...
Particularly, is hydro cost lower?
That's right. You're future-proofing your buildings against ongoing rising costs. And a step code five building should actually be a lot more durable. That reduces maintenance costs over time, too.
So we want this group to be inclusive, but obviously not unatticable, but is it, Gary, is it good not just to leave it in your hands in terms of filling that, and if you think you need council to sanction it, you can agree with that?
No, I think what we're hearing is collect a group that's fairly inclusive across the community and see how we can move this forward.
And maybe also the energy group from Squamish can might be involved. Anyway, Council prior, and then post the call.
Well, I was just going to refer to the fact that, you know, these buildings cost more to build, but over the lifetime of the building, they may save you a lot of money. And so on the affordable end, of course, we should be looking at this stuff. Unfortunately, in all our part three buildings that we're building, we're not looking at this stuff.
Well, the step code will be there for part three buildings, too.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I mean, now, I mean, we're building hundreds of units now.
Yeah.
Okay, new information?
Yeah, and just as far as climate is concerned as well, the majority of heat loss and energy use and greenhouse gases is through residential building. So as far as building or efficient, buildings is high energy wasteful.
Although it's a good idea.
Exactly, but it's, you know, as far as including...
Just an interesting, interesting piece of information is residential construction has actually improved its energy efficiency dramatically over the last 40 years. To your point, it's commercial buildings that have really done nothing on this, and so the step code does address that. But, yeah, so the conversation isn't just sidetracked to housing, a greater component in, in commercial buildings use an enormous amount of energy.
Great, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Those, what she carries. Thank you, that's really valuable, and I think municipalities have been looking forward to a tool that we can like this to actually get better buildings in our community, both from a footprint point of view, but also just a reliability point of view, so this is a good step. Appreciate all the work we've done this, over the last couple of years. Thanks, guys. Why don't we take a five-minute break? So, thank you, we're back in the three-hole meeting. I'll just go quickly to go to Linda.
Thanks very much, but I'm not sure if it was made clear when the group was just presenting on the new step code, but Richard Matthews, who's our supervisor of building inspection, was part of that provincial working group for the whole process, and he had to sign a confidentiality agreement until just recently, so we couldn't write it back until now.
Oh, no, you can.
Now you can. Yeah. Awesome.
I have objection.
Because they didn't want people to know exactly what was going on until it was going on. Victor let that become a happy rules. Okay, we are on to the zoning bylaw update.
Thank you. So just a quick update on where we're heading with some of the long bus amendments and things that we've discovered along the way, particularly specific to industrial zoning. So as you know, we're preparing amendments to the industrial park, which will deal with mini-storage and second-story office in certain areas. Outside of the long bus, we're also preparing amendments for the government road, the five properties between government road and Pioneer Way to rezone those properties to a more mixed-use form than we currently have, which is residential. And we'll bring back some options for council as well. And we'll bring back some options for council as well to go across the road. Although our recommendation is to keep the current amendment to that, to those five properties, because that is time-sensitive. We do have now at least one subsequent application on one of those properties. And the proposal was to, to deal with the immediate risk of losing that industrial, potential industrial land. The one thing that we did discover working through this process is that our definition for industrial includes both gas and fuel, storage and loading facilities. And there are very few places that would be suitable for that type of activity in Squamish. So we, staff proposed that we bring back as part of the amendments for those five properties, also an amendment to deal with the problematic language in the definition. And so it would, we staff believe that we would be able to eliminate that. In most of Squamish, likely leave that use, illegally not performing use now with the L N D facility, which would be, which is zoned for I-3. And so currently has that provision allowed to it.
Carbon engineering, that's where zoning allows it, is that?
They're not making fuel.
So they're not storing or making diesel fuel at that point?
No. No, this is really meant for storage and loading, not production.
Okay, so you know if it's storing fuel, if you're making fuel?
If your, if your zoning allows making fuel, then there'll be an auxiliary use to store that fuel.
My recollection is that carbon engineering isn't processing the fuel down there. It's collecting the carbon dioxide.
It's currently collecting carbon dioxide. They're not making fuel yet, they do have aspirations to make fuel from the carbon dioxide in Squamish. And I, I think, just to clarify, that it would be, someone, if they wanted to do this, they would have to come for a zoning matter.
That's right.
And so we're not just doing blanket, you can do it, you're saying, if you want to do it, you got to come, have a public process around it, is the assumption there? Counselor Elliott, the councilman here in...
Yeah, so those amendments seem reasonable. It's interesting, because the pilot, I think, down on the waterfront was to include producing, the next phase was to produce fuel and then use it for our transit system. So if we are going to change the zoning to exclude it, and then you've got to come back in, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least have some communication with that company and the component, just to make sure that they understand, because...
We'll get into the P D A, and you don't, they go to the P D A and how might it influence that zoning, but that's not...
The zoning is frozen down.
Yeah, my thought might be different.
That may be different, that's why I'm, I'm just wondering if it includes them or not. And the other piece, too, just around the properties on the border of the industrial park, is that will the options include some sort of split zoning? So there isn't residential allowed all the way through those long properties, but just sort of at the north end? Is that what we're looking at?
Exactly, so what we will be bringing back is mainly industrial use on a large portion of those properties, uses that are compatible with some residential. So we will be proposing that there could be space for residential use at Government Road, as well as maybe some neighborhood commercial. So it will be a mixed-use district, combining light industrial with residential, some commercial.
Yeah, and uses that are more compatible with that integration into the residential.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I'm with you 100% on those five lots. I think it's good to just give it to them to not try and cross the road.
And being that that's employment land, I don't want to see a residential project with token commercialism, which is what we'll get, we'll get, we'll end up getting like, oh, I couldn't build concrete, so here's your commercial and here's my five-story residential building. I want to make sure if we're making a new C D zone for this, that it is primarily employment land.
So I think that was where the conversation was last time, was these are fundamentally employment lands? With maybe some residential, maybe not residential lands, employment land.
Yeah, those separate residential.
Yes, exactly.
Only can get into the specifics of it, but I think council was thinking predominantly employment lands? With maybe some residential uses integrated and employment land uses that, that fit in with that, the going into more residential, transitional transition. But fundamentally, we are looking to put jobs on those lands. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed what you said about wood fiber. Is it grandfathered somehow, or is it subject to this?
So wood fiber already has a number of applications provincially. They haven't gotten to building from an application yet. But we would, we would assume that they're grandfathered in.
Okay, any, after I, so we've got some storage, some that piece, bulk fuel. Are there any other long bus issues you wanted to bring for attention at this point?
Not at this point, just wanted to draw attention to the bulk fuel and storage facilities.
So do you need a motion to direct that?
I think it would be useful just to put some, in unlikely event that we do have something come forward, to have that motion with safeguarded for 60 days.
There's a suggested motion to step prepare amendments to the district's owner while addressing the appropriate permitted locations of salt, fuel, gas, and storage facilities in all industrial zones. I'll leave that, which sounds good, seconded by Councilor Chappell. Thank you. Those in favor, opposed, opposed?
Thank you.
Just, you know, this in relation to the storage facilities. I think part of the reason that people are using storage facilities is because they don't have storage, especially in multifamily. And so what I'm wondering, maybe to take back to staff for consideration, the O C P and our development permit areas for multifamily developments, is that we start thinking about building onsite storage, so that people can actually park in their garage. And there's a place for them that's secure and onsite for them to put their kayaks and their motorbikes and their skidoo, whatever. Like, right now, we don't consider that in multifamily. And so people have to drive back and forth to their storage unit to get their stuff. But if we weren't so dense and we were really focused on the livability of multifamily developments, we might put in an extra garage that just for stuff and that people actually have storage there. Because what I'm starting to see is developers trying to maximize density, reducing storage in the unit, building garages but no storage. So maybe that's something we can contemplate in our development permit areas, depending on size of the development. Maybe that solves both people's storage solution and proximity and keeps those kinds of things out of our employment lands.
Agreed.
Yeah, well, I agree, and I was going to say, it's usually the two-car garage, one of them's the storage. So if you want to put something in there for...
I really like that idea of having a storage unit on multifamily, on any of those applications. But we also have to consider that with our land use, that will reduce our parking. So we will end up, you know, whether you take the land outside the units or underneath in the parking garage, it will reduce the amount of either visitor parking or regular parking that is going to be, yeah. But I looked into, like, the main offers, when you walk into the apartment, there's a storage area inside the apartment for your bikes, kayaks, and everything else, inside the apartments. And that's an under 1,000 square foot apartment. So I wonder what those storage units would be for? If the developers are wanting to access this community, having storage inside the houses or inside the units seems like a feasible thing to do.
And I think there's definitely a balance there in terms of what offers how much storage space for what purposes. And I think we're looking at some creative alternatives in the future as opposed to sort of the competitor approach that we've been dealing with the long ones. I think everyone is generally agreeing, we're looking at more of the ways of ensuring that there's livability, lifestyle choices within all of our housing forms.
Yes, we could...
We want you to make, weave a magic bond and make it all work.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, got it. Probably the best location to do that in the zoning program, just because development permits stay outside the building and the zoning problem could tie to the use for provision of storage, storage-specific facilities. I mean, there's some, something that has to give, and maybe that's the second loading space that we vary quite a bit, so there could be room.
And there's, you know, we're getting into, you know, sharing cars, sharing kayaks. There's always sharing, you know, the whole sharing economy is going to transform. Everyone having or needing every single toy in the list of toys. So, I mean, there's different things happening into the future, but we're looking for a bit of a different lens on how we appropriately accommodate that and not depending on the areas on that one.
Yeah, and I was also thinking about townhomes and duplex developments. Either it needs to be, storage needs to be built into the unit, as Counselor Chappell was saying, or there needs to be something in the development that allows for it, where people can use their garages for garages. But also, someone mentioned to me, you know, for large developments like waterfront landing, why wouldn't you put a for-profit storage business right in waterfront landing? So that people living in high-density, you know, that have a close place close by, that they can put a few things that they can walk, rather than having to drive to. So I think we just need to be thinking more about how people live in Squamish. And people have stuff, that's not difficult, right? So we need to build for it or we need to accommodate somehow. So I think we just need to be creative.
Now, I love the idea of integrating more into the denser neighborhoods. And then people, if they have snowmobiles and other expensive equipment, they can pay a little extra in a storage facility that's close to them, as opposed to clustering it. And that's just part of the development.
And we may need less parking spaces if we actually store stuff. And people could pick their cars in the garage, but I have no idea.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Radical.
So the final piece is, we were gonna, Robin, are you doing this? Oh, Linda's doing it. We were going to have council sign their code conduct statements.
I'm not signing.
So in September 2016, council passed code of conduct policy to apply to council as well as committee members. And there is a member's statement attached to that policy. Do you want me to read out the bullet summary for the last segment? So as a member of the District of Squamish Council or a district committee, I am aware of and affirm my commitment to the code of conduct policy and the respectful workplace policy that follows the following principles. So the respectful workplace is the one that we've had heard. Well, I am for the staff as well. Recognize the diversity of backgrounds, interests, and needs in our community. Help create an atmosphere of open and responsive government. Conduct public affairs with integrity in a fair, honest, and open manner. Respect one another and the unique role and contribution each of us has in making the district a better place to work and live. Strive to keep the decision-making process open, accessible, participatory, understandable, timely, just, and fair. Avoid and discourage conduct, which is not in the best interest of the district. And treat all people with whom I come in contact with while performing my duties with respect. And also, just as a reminder, in the code of conduct and in the rest stuff for workplace policy, there is a process that individuals can follow if they feel that someone isn't abiding by the code of conduct and they're not comfortable managing it on their own. So I will pass this out, and then once council signs, we'll be taking each of these to all of our communities.
So one of the things, just reviewing this policy again, and our respectful workplace policy, is that we don't really address social media specifically. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to update that next time we look at this policy? Because a lot of instances of undesirable behavior actually happen through Facebook, through Twitter, through email. And we talk about communication generally, but we don't talk about electronic communication specifically. And it'll be interesting to make sure that our policies accommodate these new forms of electronic communication where people might not know what's happening, but it's happening.
Yeah, and I, that would probably be in the policy, under three, right, under conduct?
Yeah, possibly. I just think we have an opportunity to be more explicit that this really includes social media and how we behave on social media.
But I think the language in, in three, conduct of members is...
It's implicit, it's not specifically...
Yeah, but it could be in that particular paragraph.
I'll certainly make a note of that for the next amendment.
Awesome, okay. Any more comments on that? Just have to get it through Jason, so that he can... And it's going out on all our committees this month? So that stands our committee of the whole meeting of independent, social determining. Bye, Karen, if I could, all those in favor? Posed, motion carries?